It's 6:00. I will call a meeting to order. We have a full board tonight. To my left is Mike King and Mike Baptiste. To my right is Associate Member Carl Schulz. Well, Consulting Engineer Charles Rowley. Carl, Richard Swenson, Sam Corbett, and George Barrett serving as chair. First item is minutes to approve. I went through a bunch of them online, but I didn't see any problems.
January 27th minutes aren't actually in there in the form.
The last one that what?
If that one wasn't done.
Okay. And we didn't do the executive session.
Yeah, Town Council tells me you have to approve it in open session and hold it until the issue is over.
Oh, I know the holding it until it's passed or safe to release, so to speak. But I always thought that once you introduce something in an open session, it became part of the record. So that was my reason for... So we need to address January 27th?
The 27th you can skip, but the other ones you can do.
Is everybody comfortable with those? I would. Motion made by Mike Baptiste, seconded by Mike King. Any discussion?
Are we doing just the 27th?
Yes.
I thought there was a problem with the heading, the headings and the dates on the top of the document.
The 27th you're not doing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had it backwards. So we're doing?
The 11th, May 11th.
What was left on the list to approve, Ken?
You have May 11th, September 10th, December...
Okay, everything but the 27th?
Right.
I know I read a bunch of them, but I didn't write down which ones I read.
Did we get the June 14th minutes? I don't remember seeing those.
Yeah, those were sent out by Sonia.
That was the last meeting.
That's the last meeting, yeah.
I missed them then. I'm sorry.
All right, scratch that. January 27th motion. Anyone care to make a different motion? Executive session, May 24th or June 14th? I don't have it in front of me.
The executive session was on May 24th.
Any difficulties with those? I don't have a scorecard on who is present and who is not. And when did you get them? Let's take them one at a time, the 11th. I give up trying to sort them out.
As long as we certify, we watch the tape of the...
No, you don't have to watch it. Just you can vote on it as is.
I did watch them, so.
Wow.
If you're comfortable with that, then a motion was made. Was there a second? Yep, thank you, Mike. Any further discussion? Call in favor? Anybody? Oh, because we are on Zoom too. Mike King. Baptiste. Carl?
Aye.
Okay, very good. That wasn't all that painful. Preliminary business, introduction of the Bentley Companies.
They've postponed the introduction until the next meeting, when they've further developed their program for the Tremont Nail Factory.
Very good. Next item is a modification to the special permit/site plan review Loews Home Centers. Care of solely engineering. Let's see. That's pretty...
Are you bringing on the Loews guy?
He doesn't seem to be there.
He's probably shocked and at home people.
It's Casey Birch, and... I don't see him on the list. I would suggest passing over this one until the do the next item until he shows up.
All right. Next item is an approval not required plan for David Fletcher, 0 Route 25, map 115, lot 1,000. Sure. Sure. Did everyone get the questions answered that they needed? Or where?
I haven't seen a response from the Town Council to our question yet. Have you?
The Town Council didn't provide a formal response to it.
Any particular reason we know of?
Yeah, because there were so many things he was doing. He didn't have the... It went to the bottom of the list.
So point of clarification, what is our timeline on this? Can we know?
I believe you have to make an action now to meet the deadline.
It was continued to this evening. Yep.
Do we have to act tonight? Or is that a long matter?
Correct.
Nice to see you first.
Yes, Betsy Mason, Clayman's Law Group, here for Long Road Energy on behalf of David Fletcher. And I have to say, my first hearing with people in more than a year, and I'm delighted to be here. Delighted. I guess I'm here because the board had requested an opportunity to take...
Pull the mic a little closer to you, please.
Sorry about that. See, it's been a year. I'm here this evening because the board had requested an opportunity to review the cases, and in particular, the second case. Krikoneis, I guess, is how I'm going to pronounce it. I'm not sure if that's right. But essentially, a case holding that an A&R plan does not need to show parcels with frontage. If you're showing a building lot, the lot needs to have frontage. If it's a non-buildable lot, that's okay. But if you're not showing a buildable lot, you don't have to show frontage. And equally importantly, for this particular parcel, and sort of surprisingly, an A&R plan does not... No parcel on an A&R plan has to show frontage, which seems counterintuitive because we're all used to, you know, it's an A&R plan, you must need to show frontage. But the Massachusetts Fields Court in that case was pretty black and white. Letter of the law clear that, in fact, no. 81P doesn't require that, so.
We run into the same issue at Stagecoach Road.
Different issue altogether, George.
Even the left-hand lot?
Yeah. I believe the only thing that would be concerned here would be the notation on the plan saying they're not considered building lots.
Yeah, we actually, if I may, you voted down that first plan that carved out those parcels. So we tried to make it even more straightforward. It essentially just depicts the parcel itself, as is permitted by the Cumberland Farms case. A permitter plan may receive an A&R endorsement. So the plan, the original plan we submitted, the first go around, had lot, I think, you know, parts A, B, and C, or lots A, B, and C, or some denomination carved out. But marked as not buildable lots. But to sort of streamline it for everybody, it only now just depicts the actual boundaries of the lot and notes the ownership in Mr. Fletcher, which is...
You're only catching half of the...
Oh, really? See, now I'm not even on Zoom, and you're still only catching half of what I'm saying. How frustrating. It's got to be me.
Is there a reason we didn't identify it as a buildable lot or a non-buildable lot?
No, basically, at this point, I mean, it's just a parcel. And we're just, you know? Yeah, so, correct.
Can I comment, Kim?
Sure.
I did a lot of research on this, and I agree with what you did. Not an issue.
Richard?
Sorry.
See, it's not just me. That makes me feel better. Thank you.
Now it's on. What I... Here's what I read. I read that it's highly recommended that the lots be identified as unbuildable if they are unbuildable. But it wasn't a requirement. And unbuildable lots can be on A&Rs all the time. This board approves A&Rs with unbuildable lots on them all the time, that don't have frontage and don't have the right area and don't have whatnot. But the odd thing, and this is just a comment, every A&R that we have done does have at least one buildable lot on it. So that's just a comment. So if this was coming, if this was a subdivision of property that was coming to us with one buildable lot and two or three or four unbuildables, we would more than likely approve it. This is a situation where we have a lot that has no buildable lots, and that may be fine. The trouble I'm having after reading all this, and I read a bunch of your cases, and I appreciate you sending me that information because it made it easy, is that the A&R gets triggered via the subdivision laws, which get triggered via a subdivision occurring. And we're not doing a subdivision here. And I hearken back to a conversation you and I had, I think, at our first meeting, where I said I could do it on my own house lot if I wanted to. So I thought about a real live example where, just say, for example, the town of Wareham was proposing in an R60 lot, I think I'm on R30, I'm sorry, in an R30 lot that you couldn't have detached garages. Just for an example. I could come file an A&R, not change anything on my plot plan, and say, I want three years to build my detachable garage. I'm not doing a subdivision. And the A&R says, no, it's not a subdivision. That's true. But there's no subdivision to invoke this process, if you will. So that's where I'm at right now.
I understand that. And I would say, if I may, through the chair, that you would be entirely within your rights under the subdivision control statute and the town's subdivision control regulations to file that plan for A&R endorsement, and you should receive A&R endorsement. Because, and I see... The trouble, I think, thinking about it, is that it's called the subdivision control law. So we expect to see subdivisions. But there is that exception to the definition of subdivision that says essentially, if you're not dividing a parcel or a lot into lots, which essentially means buildable lots unless they're marked as buildable lots, then it's not a subdivision. And the planning board is obliged to grant the endorsement.
So the only case law I could see where that was cited was Cumberland Farms versus West Bridgewater. And in that case, they weren't subdividing. They were actually joining.
Yes, they were, yeah.
My point being that lot lines were changing. So I'm just sharing with you where I'm at, okay?
And you're right. But actually, on the second page of my letter, I think my... Okay, second page of my first letter last Monday or the Monday before, I referred to the Cumberland Farms case. But then also listed on the second page a number of other cases that have invoked the same idea. And the Massachusetts Appeals Court has articulated it that if you're showing... If you're just showing the boundaries, all you have is a permitter plan.
I couldn't find an example where that was the case. Every example that I looked at, maybe I did it wrong, but every example I looked at in the cases that you provided and even the cases they referenced, there was subdivision of land going on.
I don't agree, I guess. I think, and there's a difference between subdivision of land, where you're actually subdividing a parcel into smaller but buildable lots, and just a division of land, where, you know, you may be carving up a parcel into 10 non-buildable lots, each of which will be either, you know, marked as non-buildable or a board member will say, hey, these are non-buildable. But that's allowed. I mean, basically, as the Krikoneis case says, you know, you don't have to have any buildable lots shown on an A&R plan in order for the plan to receive an endorsement. As long as you're not... If you're subdividing a parcel into buildable lots, then it's either going to be a subdivision or, you know, if you're claiming that those are all buildable lots, then you get to the question of, okay, do they have frontage? Is there access? And you get to ask all those questions. But if there aren't buildable lots, then you don't get to that part of the analysis. So.
That's all I have.
The biggest thing is this lot already exists. So if the proper notations are on the bylaw, then I don't see any reason why we can't approve it as is. I think the earlier reference or earlier opinion we got tended that way. Is that the plan?
No. These are not... That's the plan.
I do agree with Charlie's earlier statement that you could have just filed it, but...
The what?
Could have just been filed, but...
Doing that doesn't protect the use, which is what they're trying to do. Michael, is that the plan that you have in front of you?
The plan is on the board.
Does that have a statement on it that says you're not making any determination as to compliance with zoning?
And I would fully agree with that. We're only asking for an A&R endorsement. We are in no way, shape, or form...
You're not claiming that it's a buildable lot?
No, sir, we're not.
So if there was a statement that the planning board does not consider it a buildable lot, would that be unacceptable?
I think it would be true. Well, I guess I would make sure to adhere to the language under the zoning bylaw, which I don't know if you use the term "buildable lot", but, you know, I would prefer... And I don't remember if the language that is to be required under the town's regulations, there are a couple of stock things you need to say. I think one does go to... We're not... This plan doesn't intend to confirm any agreement that there's compliance with the zoning bylaw there.
Essentially saying that they're not making any determination as to compliance with zoning.
Right, and I think that is...
I think it's stated a couple of ways in our recommended language.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and I would agree. We're not asking for a compliance of any... Any determination of the zoning law at this...
One is not to be determined to be in conformance with zoning, and the other is not to be in conformance with town bylaws. And the third, you know, it's all disclaimers. Doesn't meet the misshaped lot or irregularly shaped lot.
I think it would be to your advantage and to mine if they did identify it as this is not a buildable lot. That's very common in all the plans that come in front of us. We have plans tonight that the Squirrel Island Road plans clearly identify that non-buildable lots is non-buildable lots.
Again, I would want that to be tied into the zoning bylaw somehow. And I don't know that the zoning bylaw uses the phrase "buildable lot". I mean, there are lots on which buildings can be placed, and then there are lots on which other things can be placed that aren't buildings and don't meet the definition of building under the bylaw. So I guess I would prefer to stick with the regulations language just indicating that this plan and the planning board's endorsement of this plan is not making any judgment whatsoever with regard to the zoning bylaw or zoning bylaw compliance. It seems like this...
The action you cited doesn't say... Says the same thing on their plan because all the A&Rs have that language. What it's stating is that this action doesn't create it. Another action would have to take place.
I'm still... I'm very worried about this. We, you know, we've got, what, 10, 11, 12 subdivision plans coming to us for freezing bylaws for solar farms. And that's the goal here as well. And we're making it even easier doing this. I mean, I've been... I've listened to all your arguments, and you've been right on every one of them so far in my mind. All right? But I got down to my last one about there's no subdivisions. So there's no sub... And that's where I stand on it, so.
Well, if you take no action, then it would be constructively approved.
I understand that. I think we need to vote tonight. I think we absolutely should vote.
Any questions over here?
So my only comment will be I'm frustrated that we did not get advice from Town Council. We asked clearly for advice. Ms. Mason presented a very clear case, legal arguments, and she was compelling. And I just wanted Town Council to comment. And it's frustrating that we can't get that comment. But I agree, we have to vote.
Do you get to vote tonight?
I don't know. I don't get to vote.
Not on A&R, no.
So you don't have to worry about me at all.
Would someone care to make a motion?
If I may, if... And I don't know if it's kosher for me to interrupt, but we would continue for Town Council to get to weigh in because I think Town Council will advise that that's not within the...
You wish to continue?
Yes, please.
Don't have the plan I hear or anything.
You know, I'm all for that, and I appreciate that. I just don't know how long it's going to take.
Yeah, how long of a continuance?
Right now, there is a ton of work on his plate.
I understand. At the same time, I mean, if this board is going to vote to deny this A&R endorsement, and my apologies, but quite incorrectly, in my view, perhaps then you should get the advice of Town Council. And if he says deny, then I will disagree strongly with him as well, politely, but strongly. I think the case law is pretty darn clear.
Would you be comfortable with a 30-day continuance?
I would hope that we could meet at the next planning board meeting.
Why don't you continue to the 12th? And if need be, you could ask for more time at that point.
Will we need a full board, George? Because I'm not going to be in town on the 12th.
No, you won't need a full board. You don't need a supermajority for an A&R.
Carl could vote then, couldn't he?
I would think so.
Carl won't be in the town on the 12th.
Carl won't be here either.
Carl is only available for special permits under the state law.
Why don't we...
You'd be happy with a continuance to the 12th, our next meeting?
Yes, I would.
Then if for some reason we don't have the information, you won't miss an opportunity.
Okay, fair enough.
So I'd look for a motion to continue this to July 12th.
So moved.
With a suitable extension granted. Any discussion? All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste? He's off. Richard?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
An aye for the chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We try. We're trying.
I know you're trying, and I appreciate it very much. Good evening. Stay cool.
Next item is the enforcement of a site plan special permit for Master Millworks. How's that coming along, Charlie?
Well, I don't have any more information with regard to the enforcement. I can report to you that they did put in additional structures. They called me in advance. I went to see them. This is the drainage system for the... The area that's... No, it's not the parking lot. It's the loading zone where it's depressed. So I went to see that and found that that was okay. The contractor actually asked me what did I think he could do with the stone and filter fabric to the rear of the building that was incorrectly installed. And I said, well, you've got two choices. You can rip it all out and reconstruct it the way that it should have been, or you can get the design engineer to say that what you did is okay and submit a letter to the planning board. I haven't heard since, and that's at least two weeks ago. So that's where we are.
What about the core samples? Did we get any?
I've heard nothing from the developer or the crew that did the samples as to what the results are.
Well, the results haven't come back yet.
No, they said when we were actually doing them, it would take at least a couple of weeks before they got the results tabulated and put into a report form that they would give to Master Millworks. So whether they've received that or not, probably not. But I don't know.
Was that any with their charge?
Yesterday... Today's Monday, Saturday, as a matter of fact. Nothing has changed since I was there the last time.
Yeah, I stopped by as well, and it looked like everything was kind of on hold.
Yeah, more or less is, yeah.
Okay, that's good. That's goodness, I think.
There's no... They're working? There's no cease and desist?
They weren't working the day that I was there, and they might not have been there on a Saturday anyway. But the last time I was there to inspect anything was on the 22nd. And they said they would have an oil/gas separator on Friday. I went there on Saturday morning. I saw no evidence that that had been brought in or installed. So I don't think anything was done.
Charlie, do you happen to know if our enforcement officer, Mr. Aquina, is engaged out there?
Not aware of anything.
He's not engaged at this time. He's pending the issuance of the building permit on the planning board's approval of the plan to proceed.
There are a couple of things, though, that just bear in mind. At some point, I think they were requested to bring in a landscaping plan for the area that they denuded of all the trees. The second thing is that you did vote on a modification for the thickness of the pavement. Have you actually signed that modification, and has it been recorded? Because it's not effective until it is.
I don't know what kind of documentation would have been handed over to them to file to...
Well, you'd have to sign... Somebody from the planning board would have to sign it first. So if that hasn't been done, then basically, they're in violation of the special permit because it called for five inches of mix, not four. So if that modification hasn't been done, it needs to be done.
Do you know if that was generated?
That was drafted. It's available for... That was drafted, it's, it's available for signature at this time.
I didn't sign that one?
No, I don't think you did. They also submitted a guarantee on the landscape plan, that whatever final approval there is on the landscaping for a three-year period rather than two years.
I think we discussed that at the last meeting too, right?
Yeah, well, they guaranteed it for three.
All right, I'll get that signed and in the mail. Anything more on Master Millworks? Questions? All right, moving along. Approval not required, plan for Dos Amigos Realty LLC, 14 and 16 Squirrel Island Road, map 74, lot 1010B and 1010C. Evening.
Sam Iameli with J.C. Engineering. Here we have two existing lots along Squirrel Island Road, 14 and 16. We have two existing lots along Squirrel Island Road.
There you go.
14 and 16. We simply, by keeping the same frontage, we simply look to create a third unbuildable parcel in the rear. Both lots one and two that you see on this plan will maintain proper frontage and lot area in this zoning district.
Help me here.
Yes.
And I, I don't remember when we looked at this. We looked at this about six months ago, right?
Right.
So, the lot, the lot on the right, there's two long, narrow lots, right?
Correct.
Going up and down here on the right side?
Correct, yep.
And you're just shortening those into two shorter ones, creating an unbuildable in the back?
Correct.
So, the dotted line, I see this going right through the box that says Lot 2 is the existing lot line?
Correct. If you look to the north, it, it's labeled former lot line, divides the-
Yeah, mine's pretty small right now.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Yes, that, that line would divide the two existing lots as they are right now.
So, the frontage hasn't changed at all?
Frontage does not change at all, nope.
Based on what I see, I don't see anything wrong with this at all, Mr. Chairman?
I got one question. What's that? Do you want to link it to the lot, on Lot 2? Documentation, yeah?
I'm sorry?
You got a little, uh, a couple of radius, and you got a, a radius, and you got a reverse radius.
Oh, okay, that's, um-
Half of a cul-de-sac.
Parcel 3 is designated for possible later development, so that would be to accommodate for, for a cul-de-sac if that were to be a, be a short road there.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I mean, so obviously it was there for a reason. Really doesn't change what's going on here.
Are you willing to entertain one, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, if there's no other questions.
Make a motion to approve 26-21 A and R Dos Amigos Realty LLC, at 14 and 16 Squirrel Island Road, map 74, lot 101B and 101C.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Sam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
What's that? Is that, is that light on? There it is.
How's that, better?
Yes.
Thanks, Mike. And Sam?
Aye.
An aye for the chair.
Man, it was so cool when I walked in here, and it's not so cool anymore.
All set, thanks. Made it too easy on you. Next up is public hearings. We have no continued public hearing. The first public hearing listed is site plan review for Wareham Ma3 LLC, 91 through, N101, Ferring Hill Road, map 91 and 71, lots 1,000 and 1,007. Has all the documentation been checked, Ken?
Yes, it has. The notices went out, there was a public hearing notice on June 10th and June 17th for the public hearing today.
I know we got it, there it is.
It was originally noticed as an online public hearing. In this case, we have it a hybrid where we have both online and in-person.
I guess we're all set. We'll give you the floor.
Mr. Chairman, members, members of the board, it's been a while. It's good to see you all looking well. For the record, my name is Joe Shanahan. I'm employed by Con Edison Clean Energy Businesses. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Wareham Ma3 LLC, to present a proposed 4.4-megawatt AC solar project to be built on approximately 20 acres of the 44 acres situated at 91 and 101 Ferring Hill Road. The site is currently undeveloped woodlands. It does have some residences to the south and west. It has further undeveloped woodlands to the north and to the east. The project would be built with a 100-foot setback from Ferring Hill Road, maintaining the full natural landscape screening along Ferring Hill Road, as well as on the perimeter of the entire site. That's basically what we're proposing as a project. That's what the project would do. I'd like to just briefly indicate to the board what the project would not do. This project, unlike many projects that you see in town, would not bring any traffic to the area or the community. Once the project is constructed, there'll basically be three or four visits, probably by a pickup truck, three or four times a year for routine maintenance, inspections, repairs, and the like. In addition, the project would not put any burden on the town's resources or infrastructure, that is, fire department, police department, other emergency responders. It would bring no noise to the area. It would bring no lighting or glare to the area. And it would put no children in your school system. With regard to the matter of putting children in your school system, I would like to make one strong point to the board and to the public. I've been in front of the Conservation Commission for one virtual meeting thus far. I was in front of this board a couple of weeks ago on the preliminary subdivision plan for this site. There was a lot of feedback to this board, as well as to the Conservation Commission, from people who, understandingly, would like to keep this site undeveloped and preferably forever. I've been doing these kind of projects for about six years. I've been doing real estate development for about 35 years. I, like you, have heard that argument before. But I want to make it clear to the board and to the public that the matter of keeping the land undeveloped is not something that's before this board, and it's not being considered by the landowners. The landowners with whom I have site control just spent almost two years in the probate court, tens of thousands of dollars to clear the title to this property. Their full intent, and they've expressed this to me directly, is to develop it. Their preference is to go with this, which they consider the most passive use, but equally, they've made it clear that if the project doesn't go forward, whether because of a business decision on our part, or if it isn't approved, their intent is to continue to move forward to develop that project. And there will be a cutting of trees, there will be a disturbance of habitat, and those type of things. There will be traffic, there will be noise, there will be emissions. So, that is what we're proposing to the town this evening. I'd also like to point out that once the solar project is built, while there is a change in natural vegetation, once our projects are built, 90% of the disturbed area is seeded and then overseeded with a pollinator-friendly mix. So, while there is some change to the habitat and the vegetation in the area, once the project's done and the seed is in and grown, 90% of the site will be green meadow, and it will be a pollinator habitat, somewhat different than what's there now, but it will be a new and an exciting and a necessary habitat down in that area. The other thing I would state that is rather obvious, because you folks have heard so many solar projects over the last few years, perhaps too many solar projects over the last several years, is this does, in fact, generate revenue to the town without putting a burden on the town's resources. If the board has any immediate questions, I'd be glad to address them. Otherwise, I'd like to introduce Rich Tabazinski from Atlantic Design Engineers, our consulting engineers, to address some of the more technical issues involved in the project.
Okay, good evening. Rich Tabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers. As you can, the plan that you see in front of you is basically sheet three of the overall, the overall site plan of the drawing set that included seven sheets of detail and information for the board to consider. We also completed a booklet that included all the information on the system components and operation and maintenance plans and decommissioning plans and whatnot, so I'd like to focus the presentation strictly on the plans themselves.
Could I stop you just one minute?
Sure.
Ken, do we have more copies of that plan? There's only one on the table.
I, I don't have any more copies of it, I don't think.
Yeah, if you could, just distribute them quickly so everybody can see what you're talking about.
I also have a couple, a couple of presentation boards that I could-
Well, the-
You can put them up on the easel.
Sure.
We have it both on the screen and on the easel, if that's-
Can I get more volume, please? Do the badges to us?
Come sit here, you can see the plan. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it.
Thanks. Do you, Bob, do you have the volume in the room or just online?
Part of the problem is the air conditioners have to be on as well, too. They add background noise. We can turn them off and suffer for a little bit.
Pick this up. We'll, we'll see if we can-
Okay. I'll try to, closer to the mic, I guess. Well, the project, as you can see on the board, is basically comprised of two arrays. One is, we call the western array, and one the eastern array. And they're separated by a gravel access road that comes up through the middle of the site, that comes off of Ferring Hill Road. The, the project is approximately 6.7 megawatts DC and 4.4 megawatts AC. As Joe Shanahan had mentioned earlier, it comprises about 20 acres of fenced-in area that is included in the project. And there's also approximately six acres or so beyond that, which would be part of the cleared area beyond the actual fence in certain portions of the property. There's a 20-foot gravel access road that comes in off of Ferring Hill Road, and along with that, there's a 20-foot access road that goes around the perimeter of the panels inside the fence line. We propose that to be vegetated, whereas the only gravel road would be the one coming up from, from Ferring Hill Road. That roadway would serve a couple of equipment pads that are located in the center of the site. The equipment pads would hold the transformers and the energy storage systems in that location, central to the site. There'd also be, as, as Mr. Shanahan had mentioned, a security fence surrounding the, the project with appropriate signage for identifying the property, emergency numbers, Knox Box for fire, your fire department access if needed. So, basically, in general, we feel that the site plan does meet the zoning of this property and your solar bylaw. It's an R60 zone with no particular sensitive overlays of any sort. In terms of the solar bylaw, we feel we meet the requirements, except there's a couple areas where we are requesting some waivers. The main body of your, of your solar bylaw relates to the 50-foot setback from residential property lines. And that, the, is, is supposed to be a no-touch zone, where there's no vegeta, no vegetation cleared or removed in those areas, no grading or stormwater measures. But, in this instance, we are asking for a waiver of that 50-foot requirement wherever the, the project abuts, doesn't abut any residential homes or residential properties. And that's particularly in the northeast corner, or northeast property line, which abuts a large conservation area. And then at the southwest corner, where we've asked for the waiver, but basically there's a future property that would be retained by the owner, owner of the project, of the, of the land, and we're asking for a 50-foot waiver along that property line also. Technically, it's still within the 44 acres of the project, but if there ever, if the subdivision does get approved and there's a future lot line there, we would be within the 50-foot setback for clearing along that line. So, those are two waivers that we have requested. We've also requested a waiver for just being, having to require the, to locate all the trees on the site that are 18 inches in diameter. As Shannon mentioned, it's a fully wooded site, very dense vegetation. That would just be a very, very difficult task to accomplish that, to locate all those trees that are that size. So, we asked for a waiver of that. But other than that, again, we feel like we meet the bylaw requirements of, of, of your town. But other than that, again, we feel like we meet the bylaw requirements of your town.
Are you seeking definitive approval?
That's not part of this plan. This is just site plan review. The definitive will be later.
You're referencing subdivision, that's why I asked.
Yeah, that'll be a later application.
Yeah. There was a preliminary subdivision plan approved, I believe at your last meeting, that divided the property into two lots. 39-acre lot that the solar facility would be on, and like a five-acre lot that the owner would retain. And so that future lot line, it's not there right now, it's just there on paper on a preliminary matter. But if that were to be approved by this board at some time in the future, our project would be within 50 feet of that future lot line, let's put it...
Okay. Just clarify. Yeah, I'd point out to the chair and certain members who have been here for a couple of years and may remember me, we had initially looked at this entire 44-acre site for this project, but as the chair and others on the board will remember, I inherited a project a couple of years ago on Squirrel Hill Road, and the main concern of the neighbors was the visual impact of the project. So when I looked at this site, I said, "There is no way we're going to use that portion of the site for the solar project. We're going to leave it alone. We're going to set the project back from the roadway, provide the natural screening so as to avoid any visual impact." And maybe the last time I left this board happy was when I threw a plan and said, "We were listening." All right. Questions from the board, or do you have more to add?
Do you plan on doing any earth removal on the site?
I don't believe there'll be any necessary, Mr. Baptiste. There'll be some moving around of fill, just as far as topography is concerned, but there'll be no need for removal.
Right in the center of that guy, that thing is pretty high. It's like 90 feet, 85, 90 feet in elevation, and it comes down to the front to 65. So whatever you leave for natural buffers, you're going to be looking right over the top of it. You know, Squirrel Hill's going to be on top of the hill.
Well, right, yeah, presently, we're not proposing any earthwork, other than building berm's on the east and southwest side, which would act as stormwater measures. So there'll be some earthwork, some fill. And though, basically, the material for those berm's will just be scraped off of the, of areas of the site and moved within the property, not off property.
But what's the proposed height of the array at its tallest point?
Well, you're talking about the panel height itself?
Correct.
Because basically...
Panels are no higher than 12 feet.
Yeah, 10, 12 feet. So at the top of that hill, you're looking at basically, you're looking at 100-plus feet of elevation. Have you done any line of site reviews from the neighbor's property across the street?
Certainly provide them. I don't think there's going to be an issue because of the topography and the natural screening, but it's a logical question, and we'll get it for you.
We, the reason that I ask is we had a similar project as far as topography goes over off of Tarnet Road. And once we did the line of site review, what we found was is that the neighbors were going to have a fabulous view of the array.
We'll get that for you, Mr. King.
Because these, deforesting the property to put panels up is, you know, my own personal opinion, it's a sin. But bylaws, as they are, before you came in and we changed it, allow for it. But it doesn't mean that we have to be comfortable with destroying people's views from their property.
I understand.
Now, where we're on this end of the table, another thing is feeder lines, underground?
I'm sorry, Michael.
The feeder line's going to be all underground, feeder lines.
The power?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So there'll be no poles visible?
Oh, at the entrance, there'll be four utility poles.
Running in the access road?
Correct. And then it goes underground. The utility requires the poles to put their equipment on, and as soon as it becomes ours, we go underground.
Again, we had another similar project, Carver Road, where they proposed four lines. And there was an alternative that ultimately was decided upon, where there was one pole off the road, and then it went underground, and went to ground-mounted, about four miles of wood. And it's, you know, I think what we're doing is, if you're going to set up shop in town, and you're going to do it under the zoning bylaws that allow you to do that, that's all well and good. But we would ask you to be a good neighbor while you're doing it, because at the end of the day, like you said, when it's built, and that one pickup truck comes two or three times a year, it's still the folks that live across the street or next to the property that have to live with it.
Oh, I'm aware of that.
So that would be, you know, just for information gathering, that would be something that I would, I would be recommending, is ground-mounted equipment and one pole off of the road, not four.
I'll take a look at it, Mr. King. To be honest with you, we started with eight poles.
Yep.
And talked the utility down to four, because there are two arrays, they wanted eight poles, we went down to four. We'll further explore the ground mounts.
You might be able to compare notes with the folks that are doing the array on North Carver Road, because they were successful getting it down to one pole.
Appreciate that. And with all due respect, when you indicate if you're going to set up shop, we'd like you to be a good corporate neighbor. I think I've demonstrated that to this board, to this town, on my last project. When things couldn't be done the way this would, and the neighborhood wanted them to be done, I went to my bosses and said, "Fold up shop, you can't do it right, you can't keep these people happy, go away." So my intent is to be a good corporate neighbor.
Our job at the end of the day is to find a happy balance between working with developers and still protecting...
Sure, I understand completely.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Given that we're removing an enormous amount of vegetation, and given the site topography, can you talk about stormwater runoff and impact to the surrounding areas?
Sure. Basically, the site's divided into two watersheds. There's a ridge, as you can see on the topography, there's a ridge running kind of northwest, southeast, that runs basically down the center of the site. So you have two watersheds, one draining to the wetland area to the northeast, which is where the conservation land is. And then there's another watershed that drains towards the abandoned railroad bed, which is a wet, is actually a wetland along that bed, and that's the, that's where the other half of the site is draining. So what we've done is an analysis that identifies the runoff under existing conditions to both of those areas, and analyzed how much runoff is presently going to those two watersheds for storms up to the 100-year event. And then we've looked at the proposed conditions. So when you go into a site and develop it in any way with land, you know, clearing and adding gravel roads and so whatnot, you change the, what's known as the curve number, or the type of runoff number that the property is able to recharge. So you have an increase in runoff at that particular point. And so in order to mitigate that, we've provided two detention basins, one on the northeast side of the property, and one on the southwest corner of the property. These detention basins basically will allow some of the stormwater from the site to store in them for a short period of time, and it's released at a very slow rate from those basins towards, towards the wetland areas. And that's all done through theoretical calculations, basically to match or reduce what's going to those particular areas under pre-development conditions. So you won't see any increase in flooding, there won't be any increase in runoff towards the, towards those two watersheds. And essentially, your conditions after development will match what's under pre-development. So we've provided a, basically a booklet, a stormwater report, which includes watershed plans and all the backup calculations. And I understand that the board may have a peer review, reviewing that at some point. I don't believe that's been completed yet, but that is, is something that would be, we'd expect the board to have done, and feel confident that the stormwater design meets the regulations of the town, along with the State Wetlands Protection Act also, because we're discharging from those basins toward wetland areas.
One other thing I'd like to add, and it's stating the obvious, but as I said, this site will be developed. This is a fairly benign development with regard to the issues you're most concerned about, because the only impervious area we're adding to the site are the equipment pads. Even our driveway access would be gravel impervious. Obviously, if this were developed as a traditional subdivision, it'd have public roadways built to your standards, driveways, and roof areas, all of which are impervious, and it changes the runoff dramatically of what we're proposing here.
Has any core holes, core holes been dug in that area?
Test pits, or, no, we haven't done any?
The reason I asked is, that vein on the top, I believe, is all what they call glacial tilt. So when you take away the greenery that's absorbing a lot of that water, the sponge effect, you're going to have a lot of water moving. You know, glacial tilt doesn't absorb water very well, as we know. The white pine acres in the whole area is all glacial tilt, the whole ridge here into you.
Well, if that's the case, I'm glad it's at the top and not at the bottom.
The water's still going to end up at the bottom. The water's still going to end up at the bottom.
It's going to end up in the bottom. It's going to be, you know, a lot of the water right now, a lot of it gets absorbed by the trees and everything, the vegetation that's here. Once that's gone, it's going to be, basically, it's going to be a field. So now you're going to get all this water, this water, when we get a heavy rain, a downpour, it's not going to absorb it, there's nothing that'd absorb it, it's going to run right off the surface. Glacial tilt, some nasty stuff.
Oh, I'm very familiar with this.
Nasty stuff.
Yeah, we understand, and the calculations take that into account, that there will be a change in the soil conditions and surface conditions afterward, so...
Well, so in other words, in your report, there must be some test pits in there to say what the soil conditions are, how they change.
Yeah, well, we didn't do physical test pits, but we used all the state and USGS soil information maps, which indicate what's underneath.
I have a question, a very simple one. Will I be able to see the solar arrays from many of the residential streets in the neighborhood?
I do not believe so, no. Nope.
But you're not sure?
Well, we'll confirm that with sightlines, but based on the amount of vegetation that's going to be left in place, you know, from the abutting residences, we've got hundreds of feet of vegetation between the residences, particularly along Helen Street and John Street and in that area there. And along Ferring Hill Road, there's a strip of vegetation that's, I believe, 200 feet. So based on that, that's my judgment that they won't be visible.
So to Mr. King's point, we have had good success using sightline research.
Understood.
And that'll be very important going forward.
Sure.
Just if we're, also, if we're sharing information at this time to help guide you with your designs, I would not be inclined to vote in favor of any kind of reduction as far as buffer, just so that you're aware. I don't want it to catch you by surprise, that that was the first thing, as I heard you saying it, you know...
Appreciate hearing about it up front.
Well, I was gonna say, I just, I want to be open and honest.
Thank you.
Not hearing any other questions, Mr. Chairman, I suggest we open the public hearing.
Just had one question from here. Would you entertain incorporating some trails around the perimeter of this fence to maybe tie into the conservation land trails or the rail bed?
Yeah, we've actually had some conversations with some of the organizations in town, looking at something along that line. It really hasn't coalesced yet, but it's on the table, and we would certainly consider it.
I know you've got some wet spots in there that might interfere with that.
Oh, there are, there's about seven and a half acres of wet spot in the northeast area.
And with that, I will...
Right.
Open it up for public comment, as long as we... Yes. If you'd come forward and identify yourself for the mic. We'll try to get everybody covered.
My name is Eric Lintola. Live on Squirrel Island Road, and I'm about 30 feet, 50 feet short of being in a butter, but still a very concerned citizen for what's going on here. Just what you just mentioned, that line of sight and that ridge that runs, the one resident that does live on the north side of Ferring Hill, you can see that sliver of land, that solar field will be very visible from the road and everybody else that's in that area. But I'm going to cover something, just to take a different approach on this. I've gone over a lot of the plans, a lot of the readings as best I could, and understand as best I could. But, so I wish to address the environmental concerns that will be impacted by this proposal. This proposed solar field will be a profound impact on a vast area, especially the Douglas S. Westgate Conservation Area, the Ferring Hill Conservation Area, which leads also into Horseshoe Mill Pond area. All are connected by the Weewen Attic River watershed. Here we are again faced with the destruction of large acreage of forest woodlands, affecting countless environmental and conservation concerns. They have addressed these issues in their reports, which, again, their goal is to build a solar field to make a profit. On their site plan, Sheet Two of seven, under their general notes, number nine, states, and I quote, "The site is not located within an estimated habitat or rare wildlife and/or a priority habitat of rare species based upon a review of the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program maps observed on the Massachusetts Geographic Information System." I have found a few discrepancies on their findings of what's on, what's on this site. And, and again, they're discrepancies, and they don't jive with what they've reported. And just a few examples of some of the wildlife, eastern rattlesnake is all through that area. State is endangered. The northern red-bellied cooter shows on the map the location clearly where they're located, right in this section, endangered. Box turtle, special concern, all through that area on the map. And this is on the site that they're talking about. Some of the, just a couple examples of vegetation, ram's head lady's slipper. Population status in Massachusetts, ram's head lady's slipper is listed under the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act as endangered. All species listed are protected from activities that would destroy habitat and thus directly or indirectly cause mortality or disrupt critical behavior. They're all over the place out there, all within that area. One last example, the shadow lady's slipper. The rarity of this plant is attributable to a scarcity of alkaline habitats, destruction of suitable habitats. That's the pine forest. You take them out, and these will be eliminated, destroyed. There are 173 species of animals, 259 species of plants that are protected under the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act. These 432 native species are listed as endangered, threatened, or a special concern. And I am sure that there are more endangered on this site than I've mentioned or even they've mentioned. Also, under general notes, number 10, states, and I quote them, "The property does not lie within an area of critical environmental concern based upon a review of the Massachusetts Geographic Information System." This statement needs some serious review. The Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation Heritage Landscape Inventory Program Wareham Reconnaissance Report states, "The Weewee..." Program, Wareham Reconnaissance Report, states, "The Weewee Antic River watershed, the town's goal is to protect groundwater, to enhance fish and wildlife habitat, and to preserve selected areas for public access. Horseshoe Pond, the area's popular place for fishing, a portion of the adjacent land owned by the Wildlands Trust, and the town would like to preserve some public access." And something else people might not be aware of also in this report, ancient Indian route. The ancient Indian route through the Weewee Antic watershed was also listed as a significant cultural resource, which has not been well documented and is threatened by the development. It is obvious the concerns are not about the trees, the plants, the animals, and the conservation areas along the river. To place such a massive solar project, and after cutting down thousands of trees along such a sensitive environmental area, is purely irresponsible. This site, as mentioned, there's even that ridge that runs through. This site is so beautiful, it is so unique, along those conservation areas and that woodland. It would be totally incredibly irresponsible to put this in place. Let's stop cutting down our forests and start protecting these special places. And keeping in mind, the citizens have put forward an amendment to 590, which is coming up and hopefully will be approved, that might not have nothing to do with this, but I sure hope it's on people's minds here. Thank you.
Contain yourselves, please. That just delays the meeting when we have to go through the applause and whatnot. Excuse me, the young lady behind you had her hand up first. Behind you, Annie.
Hi. My name's Colleen Loon. I live on 114 Ferring Hill, so I'll be on the
Could you pull the mic a little closer, please?
Now, can you hear me?
Didn't change.
Huh?
Is the light on?
Yeah, the light's on.
Okay, just pull it a little closer.
All right. So I live on the end towards the railroad tracks. My, I have the environmental concerns that everyone has discussed, and I hope everyone has in mind, but my bigger concern is the water, which you touched upon. I've lived in that house 43 years. I know how often my sump pump runs on a regular summer, never mind if we have a bad winter or storms. If you rip the trees out, then that's going to be more water in the ground. I can't imagine what it's going to do, and I know the house is along Ferring Hill Road, at least six out of the eight that are going to be, where this is going to be their front yard, have sump pumps, and we all go through this yearly with our sump pumps and the water in our basement. So I can't imagine that having a, ripping everything out is going to help us in any way. And then there are still people that have well water over in that area, not everybody's on town water. My concern, I know there are several suits throughout Massachusetts now where certain projects like this, chemicals have leaked into the ground and ruined the water. Well, if we have well water right across the street, I can't imagine that that's not going to be a problem at some point. Also, we have these already in the back of our, on Square Island. I stand on my deck and I have to look at them, and then all through the night, all you can hear is the generators running. So now I'm going to have that in the front and in the back. It just, it's a beautiful area. I understand people want to make money and opportunists, and I get that. But at some point, you have to not be an opportunist and look at what you're ruining for the people who've lived there all our lives. And that's, that's my concern with this. I don't think something this large belongs in a residential area.
Generators running?
Yeah, all night long. You can hear, it's like a constant motor running, since they put the ones in on Square Island.
Is that just when the power's out?
I mean, I don't know what the, since they've put those in, it's all night long. And if you have the windows open, that's, you can hear it.
Maybe it's the cooling fans? Is there battery storage on that project?
I'm not sure if there is or not. I just know that since they've been in, that's, you know, so that's my concern. If I can hear those ones, and they're a lot further than this is going to be, this is directly across the street from me.
Is it hum from high tension wires?
No, well, the newer projects that are using battery storage have cooling fans that they run pretty loud, they're around 80 dB, so.
I mean, to me, it sounds kind of like a generator type of thing, all night, but I don't know the specifics in stuff.
It's noise.
Yeah.
Just marvel, lunacy. Cut down trees to put in solar panels when everybody buys fossil fuel generators to make up for the shortcomings.
Right. So that's all I had to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I would add, Mr. Barrett, oh, Annie Hayes, Farmer's Lane. I would add, Mr. Barrett, that because this is a heat sink, it absorbs sunlight, it's about, it can be about 10 degrees warmer, and people then turn on the AC, and that's just exactly what we don't want for eliminating fossil fuels. Colleen was one of the 65 people I had the opportunity to interview, to go to their homes, all the butters. There were only two people who were not living in their homes or were on vacation, and the description of being a good neighbor is, it makes me ill. I am a neighbor, I abut that property, I came to buy an old farm, and you know who owns that farm? It's the animals, it's the trees, it's the plants. I don't own that farm. I'm passing through, but that land has been there for eternity, and I want it to be there. It's a watershed to the Weewee Antic. People at the Land Trust have said it's the last meadow in Wareham. I would find that shocking to hear. It shocked me. And going about the meadow when the Land Trust elders came, I'm an elder too, so it's not a, it's not a, anything. But they were like children in kindergarten, they would pick up a flower, a plant, and they would wander over it. And that's what this area is about. And when I talked to these 65 people, they each had stories. They were shocked, they were horrified, some hadn't seen this, and when they did, they just stood silent. They couldn't believe it. They couldn't believe that this was being allowed. And it doesn't have to be, because it's not safe, it's not good for our health. There's no infrastructure cost, are you kidding? Our president is talking about human infrastructure and natural infrastructure. That's what this is. And there's no noise, there are no children, there's no lighting, there's no cost. It's a decimated area, it's been destroyed. I want to show you a picture of those 18-inch-plus trees that can't be counted. The kids who've been playing in that for generations can count the trees. They know the ones. They know those trees because they grew up with those trees, and they were already the elder trees, and those are the ones that store the most carbon. I'm going to read you the petition I wrote, as in a butter. And I will put it into the record, and I will put all the signatures of the good people. I want to, before I do that, I'm going to talk one more time about a woman in the audience, Kathleen. Her statement is memorable, as with all the others, but it's, I'm going to make a bumper sticker. When you destroy the forest for solar and the animal life is banished or killed, everything becomes endangered. The whole 45 acres is endangered, our air is endangered, the watershed is endangered, and so much is destroyed that will never come back. On the Ferring Hill, a butter opposed to the 44-acre plan for solar development at 91101 Ferring Hill Road because I care about my children's future and their children's future. This industrial solar development is surrounded by land protected by the people of Wareham, the Land Trust, private conservation lands, neighbors supporting forest growth. Only 96 Realty is out to destroy our woodland habitat. Mass subsidies have prompted land speculators like 96 Realty, Mr. Ahern and Mr. Cressby, to develop large industrial solar in towns like Wareham that have fostered but not legally protected open space. Already in Wareham, 330 acres are solar developments with 1,400 grandfathered in just days before our citizens' bylaw of 10 acres limit was unanimously enacted. Ferring Hill Solar will be as large as the whole developed area from the railroad bridge to Route 28 up Toby Road. People still talk about the horror of seeing Toby Road. That was 11 acres of solar. Our clean water, our aquifer health and watershed to our rivers depend on protecting forests. Our kids' air is filtered and cooled by our forests. Industrial solar creates heat sinks where temperature can rise up to 10 degrees remaining through the night. Generators run through the night, and it's, it could very well be the fans, but there is, when there's a power draw from stored energy, I've read that there is sound. Forests are our most effective global tool for vast carbon capture and storage. We cannot, and these are specialists, this is the Woodwell Center in Woods Hole, climate experts say we cannot reach our climate goals without forests. Solar is important, but destroying forests for solar is insanity. Solar belongs on degraded land, brown fields, parking lots, rooftops, et cetera. Why is there not one solar panel on a municipal building in Wareham?
Yes.
Not one. No one is looking for these sites that are appropriate. They're just sitting around waiting for the next developer to live by the bylaws. Clearcutting and solar generation on Ferring Hill will displace thousands of animals, some unable to survive, some carrying deer ticks and Lyme disease to yards. Residents already report slamming on the brakes to avoid deer seconds away from leaping into the road. We have an obligation to the creatures we often heedlessly destroy by our actions. This is roadkill. They talk about a lovely meadow, that's after all of the killing. All of the killing. I have a lovely meadow, there are no solar panels in it, and it's going to stay that way. There's been no training for our fire department, I went down to the fire department, they don't get any training. They don't get any notice from the building department that solar's going to be built. It's, the only reason that they knew that there were panels on target, which if they burned would create a great deal of toxins, people would have to be evacuated. The only reason they knew it was because somebody had an HVAC problem, and they asked them to go up on the roof. They were very shocked to see panel after panel after panel. There's been no training regarding the possibility of solar panels and batteries burning. They do have electrical shorts, as recent reported fire indicated, fires indicate. Lithium-ion batteries, which store daytime solar for nighttime use, can have a runaway effect and have caused chain reactions between batteries that can be explosive. These issues are downplayed and ignored, but in a residential area, they cannot be. Ferring Hill 91101 is surrounded by woodland. It is inaccessible by other means because the loop proposed to run around, the sides of the loop proposed to run around the solar fence. A fire would spread unstalked were one to start, especially as drought conditions become more frequent. And in addressing the comment that you're going to restore things to precondition, there are no preconditions in this day and age. Climate has changed all that. Every year, the climate changes. It's 97 degrees in Boston today, I don't know what it is here, but it's been really, really hot. There's more flooding, there's more drought. We all know the restorative power of forests. Forests sustained us and comforted us during the pandemic. In nature, we could breathe. If we love being a part of the animals and plants of the natural world, of which we are a part, we must protect that life. This is wrong thinking, unsafe, unhealthy, and it must stop.
Thank you. Please. Yes.
Kathy Papalardo, Ferring Hill Road, as well as Wareham Land Trust, so I have a dual hat on. I had a couple of questions. I'm not going to repeat what's been said, although I seconded all. On your stormwater report, what was the source of your precipitation data?
Should I, if you can? I don't know if I should answer directly or?
No, that's fine. Will you?
I'm looking up the answer, if you want to continue.
I had another question, also, in your stormwater report, you have it stated that the inspection reports and all deficiencies, when they're corrected, they're all sent to the town of Akushnet. I don't understand why. That was my other question. I also have a question, our bylaw says nothing about allowing batteries or solar energy storage systems. They are not in our bylaw. The bylaw talks about generation, not storage, so I don't know that battery systems are really allowed. They are not in our bylaw. I agree with Mr. King, they're coming in, you've just seen the plans, and they're already asking for setbacks. Setbacks are a very bad area, a very bad subject. You start doing the setbacks now, they're already talking about developing the lot in the front. I don't think it's fair to the neighbors, I don't think it's fair to the trees. You're going to try to make this project fit in there, then you work within our bylaws, no setbacks. As far as the trees that are greater than 18 inches, you could go all through that property and come up and say there's too many to count? Doesn't that tell you something? That's old-growth forest in there. It's been worked on, yes, and it's been allowed to grow back. By saying, or even discussing, putting trails around the property, that area, which abuts the Ferring Hill Conservation Area, of which I am a steward for, is wet on that side. That's why they're not going to develop the northeast corner. To think of more water coming down that hill, going to a catch basin in the northeast corner, and then what? That overruns and floods the Ferring Hill property? That's conservation land that this town raised money, received grants to buy that land. It is legally protected with a conservation restriction that we enforce, and we monitor that land. There's ancient stone walls with landcourt discs and drill holes all along the eastern border there. Are they going to touch them? Oops, we took a tree down and it fell on the wall. Who's going to protect back there? We're stewarding that land that the town owns, that, yes, there are trails in there. The trails that are in there were laid out by Dave Bichette, the conservation administrator, and they were put where they were to avoid the wetlands, because wetlands are precious. You don't want people walking through the wetlands. There's a lot of critters, animals, assorted critters, salamanders, and vernal pools that are not certified that are back there. The box turtles roam all around Ferring Hill Road and in our backyard, we try to save them from the street, they don't get any recognition. The Wareham Land Trust did submit a letter to the planning board, as well as to the conservation, as well as to the selectmen. I do not see the Wareham Land Trust letter on the planning board website for this project. If you want, I can read it, but I don't know why that does not appear on your website, and I know other citizens have sent in letters, they're not on the website either for this project, and I think the citizens of the town should see what's going on. You know, having, solar is wonderful, if you put it in the right place. Destroying the forest in the name of green energy is not green energy, other than the almighty dollar. Thank you.
Please, somebody in the back there, I can't see.
Did you find the number?
Oh, from NOAA precipitation tables, NOAA.
From what you?
Could you talk into the mic, please?
NOAA. That's where they have precipitation tables, and that's what we used. That's where they have precipitation tables and that's what we used for, like, the two, 10, 25 and 100-year storms.
Right, but what was the year that that data was generated?
That I don't have in front of me.
Okay. That would be, that would be good to know since those numbers are changing with climate change. You want the most recent ones. Thank you.
I can get that information.
Good evening. My name's Kathleen Melker. I live at 26 Helen Street. This project is going to be in my backyard. As it is, Toby Road and Walmart have already created light pollution like no tomorrow. Yes, there is glare. We have box turtles. There is vernal pools back there. I've been here for eight years. I've spent a lot of time wandering back there. It's beautiful. It's pristine. It should stay that way. Again, people are coming in, these speculators, they see a nice piece of property. There's plenty of other opportunities. You can put them over parking lots. Other people have already said some very good ideas and kudos to the, the first three people. Everything they said was, was spot on. I'm just angry. I think, you know, I didn't move here eight years ago and buy that beautiful piece of property in West Wareham. I spent eight years building my house by hand. Now I'm going to stand on the back of my ridge and see solar fields. I'm going to have light, the light pollution at night. It used to be like a cave. It was beautiful. But you're going to take that all away. I think the taxpayers and the residents, we, we stand for something. You denied a lot of people at that town meeting of voting. That was voter suppression, that. You put that special thing at the end, the last vote at the end of that meeting. People had to leave. They had to go to their jobs. But it was incredible to see the turnout of people showing up because that meant something to them, that you're going to tear all this property apart. I'm just saying, don't do it. There's plenty of other options. There's plenty of other places. You know, we need to keep Wareham small. There's 19 fields. I think we have our quota. I really do. I don't think there's any other towns in this state that have that many solar arrays. You know, enough. Cap it. It should be done. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. And again, they were talking about meadows and flowers. On Toby Road, I have stood there up at the Target and I have watched them go in there and spray Roundup to kill all the vegetation underneath all those solar panels. I have seen that at several other solar arrays. They go in, one day it's all green, next day it's all brown, burned out. That's Roundup. The stuff is aerosolized. I'm sure they're not waiting for a nice quiet day to spray that stuff. It's, again, it's vegetation removal. It's earth removal. It's going to redirect water. It's just going to create a litany of problems and make a lot of very angry citizens. Once it's done, you can't undo it. Thank you very much.
One thing that was mentioned was the subsidies. And if you really want to get a handle on this, you gotta attack the subsidies because you've got a whole industry just marching in step, holding hands with the government, shoving these down your throat.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you very much for taking public comment on this. I have a couple of questions. My name is Nancy McHale. I, sorry. I also am a steward for the Farring Hill Conservation Area and I am treasurer of the Wareham Land Trust in terms of full disclosure. So I have a question regarding Kathy's question about, have you, gentlemen, seen the letter that the land trust sent to the board?
Yes, I don't know why it hasn't been put up on the website.
Okay. So long as you've seen it, have you also seen the letter that Kathleen and I have sent?
Yeah.
Okay. So you've seen both of those letters. Our personal letter expresses our major concerns that we came upon when we first read the question, read the issues, or read the, that it was coming. We have subsequently come up with some other questions. Personally, I find the fact that the application comes in with clerical errors makes the whole thing suspect. This apparently was a boilerplate that had been used on the Squirrel Island project that was defunct because Squirrel Island is referenced on page 42 of the site plan application. So, as opposed to having the Farring Hill address in there. So I find that problematic with this being a full and complete application. The other issue is the fact that the town of Akushnet is referenced in the stormwater report. I think that that's, that's problematic, again, part of being a complete and up-to-date packet on this. Those were, were a couple of the things. And in, in our letter, we, we would ask that the buffers, the waiver for the buffers absolutely be denied and that, God forbid, this project goes forward, that the buffers are increased significantly. Because if there are panels that are now at a level of 100 feet, based on the height of the panels and the 90 feet of the existing topography, those are going to be visible from miles away because it's higher than any, Farring Hill is higher than anybody else. The people coming up Farring Hill Road are going to actually probably be able to see the top of those, those panels if there's not adequate tree buffer around them. I know some of those trees are very tall. Again, whatever buffer there is, they're going to be on a major slope. So we've seen downbursts come and take out those trees. So the more buffer there is, the better chance that those trees and whatever buffer are going to exist. And, and this is just, you know, like I said, cursory. On page two of our letter, we had questions about, we're extremely happy that no earth removal has been planned for this site. That is a very good thing. And we're grateful that it's glacial till and not sand. Okay, we get that. The, the, any seed that would be used? Again, the concept of having a meadow all sounds really nice, but unless they're going to never, never weed it, it's going to grow back in again. How's that going to happen? What sort of maintenance is going to be done on it? The, the Farring Hill Conservation Land, I, I know that many of you have walked back there in the past. I don't know how many of you have walked back there recently, but it really is a walk you should be taking if you haven't already. The trails that the land trust and the town have worked to put together are really quite remarkable and you would get another sense of how precious this area is. And I have to agree with the vast majority of people that, that came to the town meeting and voted for the bylaw. Obviously, I was instrumental in that, in that proposition, but I really think that Wareham has had enough. And I understand that Mr. Shanahan thinks that this is a good project and there's going to be no impact, et cetera, but there's going to be a major impact on the neighbors, on the neighborhood and in the quality of life. Thank you very much for your, your time. And, and yes, the, the year of, what year the stormwater was, was done is extremely important because it is changing. We've seen it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick point of clarification? Sure. To the engineer. Nancy made the comment that she, she was pleased that there was no earth moving. I thought I'd heard you say that there was some earth moving planned, scraping the top to create the stormwater berms?
Yes, there'll be earth, some earth moving on the site, but no removal from the site. I think that's what we mentioned.
All right.
It'll be moved from one area of the site to basically the berms to build up the stormwater.
I'll be very interested to learn how deep you could possibly go. Okay?
As far as...
How, 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 how deep would you scrape?
Oh, yeah, we weren't, we weren't proposing any major excavations or anything. It'd be just, I mean, the site's 20 acres. There's be plenty of material just scraping a shallow amount to, to create the berms we need.
I need to understand how big, major and shallow is. So at some point, you know, not tonight.
Okay.
All right?
Sure.
Eight feet, two feet, whatever. I need, need to know.
It looks to me like you're planning to take about 10 feet off of that ridge. No, maybe not quite. Maybe five feet.
I'm not going to try to interpret them. I'm going to...
Yeah, just, just a quick...
I get so confused reading those.
Gentlemen in the back, stand up.
Hi, my name is Louis Demello. I live on 95 Farring Hill Road. It's kind of like the little knife-shaped property. I think I'm going to be the most affected by the, you know, seeing these solar panels in my backyard. I've been here since 2003. The wildlife back there is kind of what I'm worried about. Somebody had said something about, you know, solar panels. I understand. There's a place for solar panels. I think they belong on top of houses and I just don't think, taking all that property, the owls, the deer, you know, the turkeys, all the vegetation and, and I, like I said, I'm probably going to be the one that's most impacted by the visual thing. I don't know exactly how far from the house they're going to be. I'm hearing about the noise levels and stuff like that. I go in my backyard 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night and I hear owls back there and coyotes and see deer in my yard all the time, turkey. Where are they all going to go? You know, there's already one on Squirrel Island Road. It's kind of almost making it like a, almost like a city now. You know what I'm saying? We're taking away. I moved out here in 2003. I lived in north end of New Befford. I'm a two-family house. I always said that one of my goals was going to be to move out in the country and we used to go camping on High Street at Outdoor World and we just loved the fresh air out here and smelled the pine needles and all that good stuff. And I think this is going to take a good, it's, it's going to take a lot away. You know what I mean? From a lot, you know, the animals and, and everybody. It's just, it's a beautiful, beautiful place to live and I think, I don't think solar panels are going to be a good idea back there. It's just taking away from the wildlife and all that good stuff. I don't, I just don't think it's good. Too much is, is too much already, you know? So that's, that's my opinion on it. And like I said, I'm going to be the one that's, I mean, how far, how far behind my house is that? Do you know what I mean? I, every morning I wake up since I've been there, I'm a commercial fisherman, I'm out at sea a lot, but when I come home, my back window, I live, you know, on a, in a colonial and my bedroom's upstairs, I go to that back window 99% of the times that I get up. If I'm not in a rush and I open up that window and I just look out in the back and just, you know, it's a nice sight to see. I just don't think the solar panels is going to, it's going to take that all away. No, that's my opinion.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks. The, the locust map you gave, is that the other solar field you know? Charlie, have you looked at any of the calculations for this?
No, I haven't received authorization. The 53G account's been set up yet, so I haven't done any review.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
My name's Dan Malone. I live at 114 Farring Hill Road. I bought my house in 1976 and I've lived there for over 40 years. I think 7,300 solar panels in my front yard is a little extreme, to say the least. A 100-foot buffer, I'll be able to see them right through the woods. You can see, you can see 100 feet. If I'm sitting in my living room, I can see 100 feet into the woods already. So 100 feet buffer is nothing. And now they want to cut it down to 50 because they want to have some kind of a variance or whatever. What do you just, I got one in back of me, now I got one in front of me. Why don't you put one right in, in my driveway at this point? Because the valuation of my property is going to go, is going to sink. It's going to drop like a rock. People come down, come into, come into this area and they want to buy houses and stuff like that. They're going to buy it with, with solar panels all across the street? They're going to look, of course not. Absolutely not. Then nobody's going to, nobody wants to see that. I just want to go on record as I oppose this project 100%. I wish all you people, as a board, voted down. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Information needed or...
Help me, George, with process. Does the site plan review, does it close tonight or can it be continued?
Oh, no, it can be, it can be continued if we...
I would think with the amount of suggestions from the board concerning layouts and whatnot, that that would be the proper thing would be to continue it.
I'd, yeah, I'd like to see some answers on, on some of the questions that we've raised before we go any further.
Could you identify them for applicants or...
We've been taking notes, Mr. Chairman. Any additional input, we'd certainly welcome, but we've been taking notes with the comments made by both members of the board and the public. And we fully expect this to be continued, probably at least once.
If not, if not twice, right?
But we will get that information to you. They're all, I've been doing this a long time. I won't say the questions are new to me, but they're all valid questions. They're all valid concerns. This planning board doesn't need me to defend it, but the public needs to be aware that I'm here because there are bylaws in this town that allow for the development of certain sites and this happens to be one of those sites. And I wasn't invited by any member of this board to bring this plan in to the town of Wareham and I fully expect to be put through my paces before we get to a point of even making a decision on it.
Yeah. And you did point out that development of some sort is, is planned. Just so those in the room know, I think it was estimated to be approximately a 20-lot subdivision.
Twenty-two, that's correct.
So I'll reiterate my points just to be clear. I'm very interested in the siding. I'm very interested in, in the detail around the stormwater, stormwater, excuse me, and I'm very interested in understand how much earth is going to be moved. I understand it'll all stay on a property, but I want, but I need to understand moving from and where and how deep and how, and whatnot. I understand it'll all stay on a property, but I want, but I need to understand moving from and where and how deep and whatnot.
Hold on a minute. Any other input you wish to...
I just wanted to clarify, obviously, line of sight study.
Sure.
And when we did the line of sight study for the folks that lived on the opposite side of Tahanet Pond for the make-piece project, we didn't do it from ground level. We did it from decks. We actually, in a couple of cases, did it from upstairs bedrooms to point to the gentleman with the upstairs bedroom looking out. And at the end of the day, on that particular project, the developer realized how important it was for us to make sure that if our zoning put us in a position where we could not stop it, for whatever reason, that we were going to make sure that the residents that surrounded the project didn't see it. And that resulted in them extending, I think along the water's edge, their buffer extended out to almost 220 feet in order to get the line of sight coverage that was needed to protect those homeowners on the other side of the pond.
That's good guidance, Mr. King. And I've also made a note of your inquiry with regard to getting rid of utility poles also.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I did see a couple more hands go up. The gentlemen in the back.
Thank you. My name is David Moretti. I live at 20 Helen Street. My property is the highest point in Wareham. If you look on your map, John Street doesn't exist. It's my driveway.
Say, I'm sorry, say it again.
Yeah, John Street does not exist. It's my driveway. John Street is something that was put in about the '40s. It never got, there's John Street over there, there's a couple others. There was supposed to be a playground over there. However, that's a different subject. I can tell you that right from the back of my property, there's wetlands. There's a pipe that goes under railroad track that every once in a while I'll go down there and shovel out because I got a pond back there, get the leaves out of the way so it'll drain. I do not believe that anything they will do, where they are going to put the solar system, right, is going to stop a tragedy of water going down into that very small stream that if you follow it, will take you right out to the Weewee Antic River. There's also one other thing I'd like to point out. In 1989, when I had the house built, they moved it way over because the path that goes through my yard and the next to the last gentleman who lives on Farring Hill Road has a path that comes out in the corner of his property is an ancient way. It starts at Inwrecked Lane in Freetown. And a Freetown selectman told me that years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cherie Delpree. I live at 112 Farring Hill Road. These gentlemen have said that they've gotten their information from state reports. I know the state has state botanists. Have they paid to have them come out and walk the land? As the ladies who are trustees for the trust, the land trusts, no. And everybody here has said, the weather is changing. The land is changing. Has anybody, have they paid to have the state botanists come out and walk these acres? So we know exactly what's there as far as vegetation, as far as animal. The second thing is, all the paperwork they sent out to us about these meetings was incomplete. We got two pages, that little map and the one that shows that they're going to put houses. So which is it? Are we here for they're going to just do solar? Or are they going to put 40-something houses in there on those other two pieces?
Any map that you would have received would be way more than the legal advertising. I don't, I don't know.
We got two pages. There's one, and they didn't even have the date and time for the meetings. So it was like incomplete to begin with. But my question is, he's referencing some water report. Like the lady said, what year was it? Was it the year we had no rain in 2001? Or was it the year that we had 120-some-odd inches of snow that year? All the other people who live here on Farring Hill Road, like Colleen said, we all have water issues. All it needs to do is rain a half an inch and we've got water in our yards. You're going to clearcut this property? We're going to have mud in our front yards.
The data that they use is based on the average for the, what, 100? You mentioned the 50-year, the 100-year, the 500-year.
Where? In the center of Wareham? Was it done on Farring Hill?
Same location.
Really? And where, is there a state botanist report attached to all of their paperwork? Because they really should have had it walked first, especially where there is known conservation land there.
I'm sorry, I missed half of what you said.
Chairman, just for the record, we did not send out any notices, any maps, any plans to the public.
That's what I was trying to explain, that that's not part of the legal notice. You may have got them online or somebody may have forwarded them.
They were all certified. Everybody here got certified water, but there was two maps.
Well...
Charlie?
So it's just, just a very general comment because I say I haven't looked at the plans, but when I looked at the information, when I put my cost estimate together for the review, I did notice that there were waivers requested and they were cited tonight. Unless the zoning bylaw specifically states for site plan review and especially under the regulations with respect to solar farms, if you are specifically authorized under that section of the zoning bylaw to allow waivers, then you can. But it's my understanding that the only one that can do that is the Board of Appeals. I don't think that under the solar bylaw and in general under site plan review that you are allowed to grant any waivers to specific things that are dealt with in the bylaw itself. You can do that under subdivision rules, regulations, but not the zoning bylaw.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rowley, I'll try to make that issue easier for all of you and indicate publicly, we hereby withdraw the request for any setback or buffer.
Very good.
And to be clear, that, that's a request from a waiver, a waiver request on a requirement of showing 18-inch diameter trees on a plan. Is that, do I understand that right?
That's what she's referring to, yes.
Right?
Yes, and we've requested a waiver from that requirement.
And did you withdraw that as well?
No, I did not, just with regard to the setbacks.
I'm sure we, I'm not sure we accomplished anything if Mr. Rowley's point is correct about our inability to grant waivers on site plan review.
Yes, but they can, they can seek relief from the Board of Appeals.
Oh, true. I'm talking about this board.
And I'm, I'm pretty sure that, and I've gone over this a couple of times and I think I brought this up from other solar applications where waivers have been requested. And I think they also recognize that this board does not have the authority under the zoning bylaw to grant those waivers.
And I think we've already demonstrated that we're not of the mind to be granting waivers of any type anyway. This is already a hotly contested topic.
I not only listened, Mr. King, but I heard.
What's that?
Mr. Chairman, the other thing I'd indicate to you is, obviously, this is going to be continued. The matters that have been brought up tonight are all somewhat substantial. Rather than doing this piecemeal and coming back and saying, "We figured out the utility poles. We need another two weeks to figure this out." I know we can't get those site issues resolved, particularly with the Fourth of July weekend coming up. So if it's the board's will, I'd ask that this be continued for two meetings in order that we can put a dent in some of these issues for you.
And also, you've heard the concern on the drainage and runoff. I think it's important to get...
Absolutely.
...materials over to Mr. Rowley for review.
Yeah, the account hasn't been set up, so he hasn't had reason to start.
Mr. Chairman, Leslie Edwards is on line with her hand raised. Leslie Edwards, would you like to speak? You're on mute.
I hear something.
Is, is this... Leslie Edwards, do you want to speak?
I just want to get your attention so that you can recognize the person who is on the phone trying to get recognized. Because she keeps getting over, overtalked and no one is recognizing her.
All right, go ahead.
I'm not on the phone. I don't know where they are. I don't understand what's happening.
Can anyone hear us?
Barely.
Can you put your mic next to your PC speaker, Ken? Without causing massive feedback?
I don't know if they're recognized.
Neither. I'm, I can't hear any audio from the meeting.
But they can't close the public hearing because they know we're out here.
Lisa, we hear you. You can continue.
Can anyone hear us?
Now we can.
Okay, I haven't changed anything about my connection, so I don't understand what's happening. But Leslie Edwards Davis, 8 Trinity Lane, I just want to voice my opposition to the ever-increasing solar projects in town. I think the voters have been extremely clear about their position on this. You should exercise every power that you have available to you to stop the spread of this and at the expense of our forests. And I just raised my hand so that you could recognize the caller, who I think is Lisa Morales, who has been trying to speak for the last hour.
Thank you, Leslie.
Well, I'm not sure that anyone can hear us, but...
Go ahead, Lisa.
We have absolutely no idea what's being said.
Go ahead and state what you want to state.
Have I been recognized by the chair?
Yeah, he's asked you a couple of times to go ahead.
There's absolutely, all right, I may speak then. This is Lisa Morales. I'm an offset resident. First, procedurally, and I want you to understand, Mr. Shanahan, I am well aware that this subdivision plan is not for a specific project. So I am well aware of that. Procedurally, first of all, the conduct of this meeting is contrary to the public meeting law. 99.9% of what's been said by the board members is inaudible and unintelligible. You advertised it and noticed this as a meeting by Zoom. You failed to re-notice this by certified mail to the abutters and this meeting is being held in contravention to the public meeting law. That's number one. Number two, Mr. Shanahan has noticed to us that there will be no need for any fire or police involvement with this property. So we'd like an assurance that any vandalism or when these batteries explode, Wareham need not respond. Number three, I refer you to your own website for the memo regarding the filing of preliminary subdivision plans slash zoning freeze, which clearly enumerates the 40A violations that this plan is in because they are not grandfathered. And there are a number of other 40A oppositions that will be forthcoming. But this is absolutely not grandfathered. This came in well under the notice of impending bylaw change and postponing the public meeting. It was the town meeting, did not do anything to that. I'm very sorry that they have backed the wrong horse with this piece of property and then spent two years trying to clear the bad title. But even if this is a subdivision for housing, this board should absolutely not waive any of the protections put in place by the people of Wareham, which will long live after this board is gone. And voted out or, or fired or dismissed, then none of these waivers should be granted. They are there for a purpose. They protect the homeowners, the home values, the conservation issues, the ecology, all of these things. We have now been told that this is a benign development, but nevertheless, it will have runoff issues and, quote, "graping of berms." Therefore, we now have earth removal issues that need to be addressed. There needs to be a hydrology study done. We were just told there were no test pits and they're relying on probably old data. This is a very sloppy application. They simply cut and taped the Acushnet data onto this application and this planning board should have kicked it back on that basis alone. So on these procedural issues, in addition to all of the ecological issues that were so aptly brought before you tonight, this board must refuse this project as written and send it back to the drawing board. You should ask the Putnam Valley, New York people about Mr. Shanahan and the objections they raised over the wisdom of replacing mature forests with solar. And the fact that he has told us that a seeded meadow, which gee, is that going to be non-GMO seed, is going to replace these 90-foot tall trees is beyond absurd. We are not fools here in Wareham, Mr. Shanahan. Thank you for hearing my comments.
I think the hybrid meeting needs a little work, Ken.
I have to say, it's working a little better than I expected it to, though. We'll get there.
Are you looking for someone else, Ken?
Don't have anybody else with their hand raised?
Meg Sheehan has her hand raised.
Yes, thank you. May I speak? Having a hard time hearing, but assuming you can hear me, thank you for the opportunity to address this board. The question that I would like to pose is, why is the board even considering this? Because it appears that the town meeting vote on June 12 bans this project. That town meeting warrant article prohibits projects over 10 acres. And the warrant article was filed with the town clerk in March, meaning that when it was approved by the town meeting unanimously on June 12, it was retroactive, its effective date was retroactive to March. There's a lot of confusion and the law is extremely complex. I am an attorney. I do have zoning law experience. I would not pretend to have a definitive word about whether filing of a subdivision freezes the zoning in place prior to the vote, which is what Mr. Shanahan appears to be claiming. I think this warrants an opinion from the town council as to whether the board even has jurisdiction to consider this application because the way the bylaw is written right now, this project is not allowed in this R60 zoning district. Thank you.
Must be a pterodactyl.
Are there any more comments from the public?
I, I just saw her hand up. I thought Ken was looking for somebody.
I don't have anybody else online with their hands up.
Okay, yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Corey Tripp, Six Timeless Lane East Wareham. I also agree that the town's had enough solar. I've heard a couple of you make comments that you can't read the CD, so I'm going to ask you. I do this for a living. Are you willing to share the construction drawings with me along with your subsurface geo report so I can go over it myself?
Mr. Tripp, I can't, I can't, I can't hear you.
I said, I am looking for a copy of the construction drawings so I have more accurate questions that I could ask. I'd like the subsurface geo report because I do this as a living. This is what I do. I'm a project manager. I build cell phone towers. I would like to be able to go over it. You don't have construction drawings, so you have no idea what you're building up here?
Well, I do know what I'm building.
Okay, I would like some, if, would you be willing to share? It's a yes, absolutely. Did you, do you have a subsurface geo report done on the property? No. Okay. Well, a lot of times you need that just for the foundations of putting in the solar. Make sure it doesn't move. Yep, exactly. You know what I mean?
We do.
I appreciate it. Okay, well, that works. Okay, and compaction tests? Do you do compaction tests for the foundations? No? Not needed for these? All right, appreciate it. Exactly. I agree. I, I understand that. It's low to the ground. Yep, nope, but any information you could share, I'd love to see. Thank you very much. Oh, absolutely. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Is it someone up? Yes. We'd like to have it on the mic if we could.
Before I came, I got a tape of a chainsaw just so maybe people could take a second to listen to it. And I imagine the terror of animals. Kathleen has talked about the birthsings now of the fawns. I saw a little fawn on one side of a chain link fence and the mother on the other. And this just heartbreaking sound. So I'm thinking, we have a very dangerous road. Fairing Hill is very narrow. It's very dangerous at a certain time of day when the sun is setting. You can literally be blinded. When that destruction starts to happen and the animals start to flee, I cannot imagine there's not going to be some tragedy on Fairing Hill Road. My other point or question is that as climate changes and accelerates today in the Pacific Northwest, they said that they haven't had a temperature like this ever on historic record, but from core samples, not in maybe a thousand to 10,000 years. It's getting extreme. When the rains are more intense, are these folks coming back and changing the designs of drainage sinks, basins, and reconfiguring how the water is flowing into about properties, including the road? Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we've gathered enough information to give some direction here this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we continue the public hearing to our next meeting.
The applicant has requested the second meeting. Second.
I want to be clear, the, the, the public hearing remain, will remain open and reopen at our next meeting, right?
So that would be the 26th of July?
Will you be prepared by then?
I would hope to be.
I mean.
I don't want to bring these folks up.
Oh, I, oh, I understand, but you had indicated you wanted to, you wanted to make sure you had ample time to address all the issues. Okay. All right, I'm sorry, my bad.
Motion's been made to continue to July 26th and did you second? I did. Mike King seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, Cal?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mike King?
Aye.
An aye for the chair. See, I went the wrong way that time. You do the same.
Mr. Chair, before we open the next topic, the, the question about grandfathering continues to come up. I believe we got it.
Excuse me, excuse me, if you could just exit quietly, that would be great.
I, didn't we get a definitive statement on grandfathering in one of our May meetings?
Once the plan is filed, it is considered grandfathered, to my knowledge.
Yes, but the question, the question that's being raised is what's the date? Is it the date of the notice of the filing? I mean, excuse me, what's the relevant date for the zoning change? I believe we got a definitive statement on that.
Recede at town clerk. Was what I remember.
There is a conflict there. I think a lot of our bylaws say submitted to the planning board, but there is a legal way to file with the clerk.
Yes, that, that's not the date in question. I think the date in question is when, about when the notice of the zoning change. It's not, people are contending it's not the date it was voted on, but it was the date that it was filed, the zoning change, which was in March.
The zoning change was filed?
Or the warrant, the warrant, the notice of the warrant was filed.
Oh, so you're, are you asking when, when, since that Article 17 passed, when does it go into effect?
And one of the, one of the speakers said it was retroactive to March.
I was, I specifically asked that question and was told it's the date of town meeting.
Okay, so.
Subject to review.
By the Attorney General. So I, I think we need to make sure that that's definitive and that, that all the folks who are concerned about us considering grandfathered, these grandfathered applications.
As far as, as I'm aware, the, it's just the date of the town meeting vote, which is when the article actually is officially adopted by the town and so it takes effect. And in that case, the subdivision plan was filed before that, that action occurred.
Right, and that's, that's the rule that this board has been operating under. However, we've had, or, excuse me, public hearing after public hearing after public hearing, where the citizens say, no, that's not the date. It's a different date, so.
I'm, I'm comfortable with date of town meeting.
Okay, so that, we're gonna. Then that's fine. I'm good. I just wanted to get that clear.
And I would think by this time that somebody would have provided us with legal precedent as to why we should take their data as opposed to the one we've always operated on.
I, I only bring it up because it's come up in the last three meetings.
Yep, understood. Bay Point. Yes. And this is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what he wants, put that darn leg outside. Look, you're putting Apex down on the end now. You know that, right?
Evening. Hello, Chris Reynolds from Bay Point Country Club. Want to thank you for having me here and it seems kind of normal after being on Zoom for so long and being in front of a planning board again. I do miss being at my dining room table, though. It's a little easier, so. So what I did tonight, I just want to kind of give a brief background of where we are just to kind of fill in some of the board members. Right now, we are finishing up Phase One, which was 28 houses. We got our last CO this last week. So that finishes the building of Phase One. We're currently finishing the landscaping on the last duplex and then we're going to go on to finishing the landscape and the permanent roads in Phase One. Previously, we came back to, to the board to get a major modification to get Phase Two and Phase Three approved. We received that previously. Now we're coming in here again to ask for another modification to the plans. As the market changes and, and a little bit of our experience on site, we kind of come for you with our current plan. The plan that you see, I've kind of got a, a bunch of handouts to hopefully make it a little easier. What we're coming in today is to ask for a modification. We're not changing the number of units. We're keeping the same number of units on the site. All we're trying to do is to minimize how much previous development we were planning. One of the major reasons is to kind of really back off the homes from the golf course and kind of what we're seeing a little bit in Phase One and we think what would happen in Phase Two. So what we did was to really minimize the, the, the golf course, the impacts or possible impacts. So Starboard Drive, which is the main drive, pretty much stays in the approximate location. Beacon Street, which is the loop, is, is, is primarily the same, softened a little bit to again, close that gap between the golf course. And then we had a little finger that went out, which was called Anchor Way. Tried to showcase between the first, first two plans that you see in the package. Just, I think you can visually see the two differences. The greens are the property lines and the highlighted in orange are the roads. The difference in roadway is about 427 feet less in this current plan. The total acreage is about 2.25 less acres than what we had previously approved. So there was no change in the overall development because we're lessening the roads. We went from more singles originally to now more duplexes and we also have an eightplex on site as well. So as, as you can see on that plan, it's a mixture of 16 single families, 16 duplex units and one eightplex down at the end to the left. In your package tonight, some of the questions that got brought up last time was people wanted to see what that eightplex would look like. We provided some renderings in this package. You'll see the, the, the renderings of the front and the back as well as the elevations and as well as the footprints. As we continue on in the package, we also, we met this week with Mr. Rowley and Mr. Buckland and wanted to kind of do a complete package because obviously this has been through you guys many times. So we also included the homes that was approved in Phase One that we're currently still planning to build in Phase Two. So you'll see the four homes, excuse me, that we built in Phase One and are proposed the same homes in Phase Two. And I think that kind of helps to show you how the eightplex kind of really ties into the, the, the singles and the duplexes that are currently already built as well as proposed to be built. There's four homes that we, that we have built and are building and each of those plans are in the package. The last item that I also put, because it's a little easier than not having to do renderings, is obviously this is a Phase Two, so we've done Phase One and a hundred people have been through the site. So I wanted to provide some pictures as well of Phase One homes since these are really the ones that are going to be building. So to kind of give you an idea, really so much easier to see in person and, and actual photos than just in renderings. So that's kind of what I have in the full package tonight to kind of hopefully go through. If there's any questions, obviously, so.
May I?
Of course.
The single-family homes in Phase One, that same architecture is carrying over to your proposed plan?
Yes.
The duplexes in Phase One are carrying over the same architecture?
Yeah, so what we've, what we've done is our duplexes are just basically the two single-family homes joined together. So to keep it kind of a mixture, not just look cookie cutter by any means, sometimes when we have duplexes, we just don't even mirror them. Sometimes because they all complement each other, we put two different types of duplexes, two types difference of homes together, which I think, as you can see in Phase One, creates a little bit of a mixture, changes kind of what's going on and to there. So it's pretty much, it's the same home, really the only difference is the roof line because now you have one common roof line, but it's two individual homes joined together, so.
The only thing new in this is the eightplex.
Exactly.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to get grounded.
And the number, right, obviously the numbers.
And I do have a really simple, stupid maybe, but it's simple. I get very confused on Phase One, Two, Three and Four. About what is Phase One, what is Phase Two? So the, the work going on now, as you pull in the road up on the left is Phase Two, isn't that true?
Yes.
Okay, and.
Two and three.
Two and three together. We're doing two and three together? I just want to make sure I understand when you use those words, I know what you're talking about.
And I don't disagree with that at all. So Phase One's to the right.
Yeah.
When you drive up to the right, 28 homes. Phase Two and Three, Phase Two is Starboard Drive, the main road. As you can see here, the main road is considered Phase Two just because of more construction, right? We can build that one roadway, sell those houses. And then Phase Three would be Beacon Way, which is the loop.
So what you, the, the real modification is to be, is to Phase Three with the addition of the townhouses in Phase Two. How am I doing?
So it, everything changes a little bit. If you kind of, if you kind of look just visually between the two homes, like even. So you can see a little bit of how the, the roadway kind of curves a little bit, how Beacon Street kind of juts out a little bit. You can see it's a little smoother to scent it along the two fairways. The, the Beacon Street is not as angular. It's kind of smushed there to have more, less impacts to the golf course. This anchor drive is also removed. So I don't want to be wrong, you know, to say there's, there's changes, minor changes, right, in terms of the roadway and the subdivision process. So when you look at the subdivision plans, which is one of the things we're changing, it changes each of those lots because just by a little bit of the roadway change. But you're in right, the major differences is, would be this eightplex at the end of Phase Two. It was really just phasing because of, you can build Starboard Drive, that's can stand alone kind of for bonding purposes there. Phase Three would be this next loop, this Beacon Street, because again, you don't have to build that road right away. And then Phase Four would be the Cedar Apostle as you first drive into the right. This is kind of the entry, Bay Point, Onset Ave, drive into Bay Point Drive, the existing villages up here to the right. So the Cedar Apostle, as I call it, is right when you come into the right. So I kind of call that Phase Four, just as that. Now, Phase Four is just because I gave it to Phase Four. Now Cedar could go at the same time.
Sure.
Doesn't really interact with the, with the others. So very good question, many.
I, I just want to make sure we're all talking the same language, all right?
So one of the, one of the things about the eightplex is on the Cedar Apostle, we're proposing the same eightplex. Again, trying to tie the entire project together. So this eightplex that's at the end of Phase Two is the prototype for the Cedar Apostle. So right now, as we've kind of worked through the design of the eightplex and the layout here, we're coming into you shortly on the design of the Cedar project to stop permitting that. So the idea is, and that's kind of what I wanted. So the idea is, and that's kind of what I did, great segue, is really to kind of say it's not just a standalone unit, the eightplex, it also ties in what we're proposing to do on Cedar and kind of put this whole master plan together for the overall development.
Thank you.
The site work that's going on, it appears as though there's a heck of an elevation change. Is that consistent with the original conceptual plan? Looks like, looks like you took the hill out.
So no, that's pretty much, we haven't taken any dirt out. The only thing that was there is was stockpiles. Maybe you're seeing the stockpiles from Phase One, but there was no hill per se. If you kind of look at the two fairways, they're pretty relatively speaking flat. So no, we haven't done any, pretty much level relatively site. You can kind of see it dips a little bit as you go down and then kind of comes up to where Onset Ave is, but we are not, there's no proposed major excavation, so to speak, or anything different.
Having played those holes, I will attest that that's a, they're pretty flat.
Oh, you made that whole one?
I did.
So as I, as I mentioned, it's a, it's a modification of everything, the site plan, special permit, subdivision plan, we're changing all of it. Again, minor changes in terms of, not saying minor, in terms of, when I say minor, we're not adding more homes, we're changing the location of each of the roadways, modifying the subdivision of each of the lots that are separated by the streets. But overall, it's a decrease of linear footage of road, decrease of lot area, and the same number of units.
If I remember right, Chris, one of the comments, I think it was yours Charlie, talked about the large parking lot behind the eight unit and what that would do to water runoff and were there issues there? Do I remember that right?
I haven't gotten into this yet, Richard.
Who, am I wrong there? Did someone bring that up?
There are changes there, though.
Pardon me?
There are changes from the old plan.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, no question about that.
Yes.
But I don't call making that comment yet.
But have you been, all the changes been submitted to you for review?
I have a copy of the plan. I have the drainage calculations. I verified with Sonia last, was it Wednesday when we met? Tuesday or Wednesday? That there is still money in the 53G account that they have to cover the cost of the review. But I only got the plans when we met last week, so I haven't had a chance to finalize it.
Did I dream that comment?
I think so.
Sounds like something he would say, though, so.
It sounds legit, doesn't it?
Very, very similar. And so, and answering that question is, is you can kind of see it from the rendering and that's why this actually is a little trickier. So you're, you're correct on that regard because that eightplex has two different faces. So when you drive down Starboard Drive, right, this is the so-called front, okay? So didn't want to have decks or anything because it's really kind of a front, but the parking's in back. So the idea was to not make it look like the back either because the back is facing Onset Ave. You're going to be able to see that from Onset Ave as you can't currently drive now. So that's why I think, that's why it was important to show both renderings. So, because this has to be architecturally pleasing from Onset Ave, which is why we kind of have a front door entrance. And to there, we have some upper decks as well. The front also has some front awnings and other architectural features to really to make it feel like either side, you're not looking at the back of the building, you're looking at the front from either way. There's not going to be, there's going to be hardly anybody driving down Starboard Drive because it's really only them and maybe somebody to turn around. But that's still an important view when you drive down that road to not make it feel weird or it's the back, you know? It's got to tie into the overall people's front yards because as you drive down this roadway, right, you're driving down, you'll see the front of this, of this building, this eightplex. But also from Onset Ave, you'll also see the so-called back of the building where the parking is. On the design process, the parking's in back, we're doing a new drainage basin right on the current tent hole. So it's pretty much connected to that area. So the proposed detention basin that we've had was always in this area, which is just down gradients. We're able to actually pipe very easily and we had the grades easily to make that work. Similar to what we did on the current fifth hole that's out there, kind of made it a water hazard, right, when you kind of tee off from the existing hole, kind of kill two birds with one stone, so to speak. You know, you got to, you know, it's a good place for the drainage, adds a little different excitement coming off the tee and kind of does both. And so we're kind of doing that same theory there. It's kind of a lower area. We're able to drain from a couple of different locations to get to that area and that existing eightplex, the back of the eightplex, allowed to drain actually very easily there.
So Charlie, just to be clear, your review will look at all those stormwater and drain calculations?
I have to because the, the road location has changed. Grades have changed.
Yep.
So I'll be looking at all of that, including, you know, sewer, water lines, all that stuff, just the way I did with the first go-around. It's essentially a new subdivision plan is what it is. And just, just to make a point about this, not only is this the creation of the new layout, but in terms of what you're actually doing, you're going to be discontinuing the old plan. If you don't discontinue the old plan and make a notation to that effect somehow on this set of plans and put it in the registry, you're going to have two different plans sitting on top of each other without any legal change. So it's important that when you're looking at it, Chris, and the board is looking at it, that while we're talking about a brand-new subdivision plan as a part of your ultimate vote, that you vote to discontinue the old subdivision and you'll need to know what the dates were and where it was filed in the registry and that, so that there's a clear path to this new development. Otherwise, it'll be an issue. George, one other thing, could I speak to the, to the eightplex for a second if I could? When you look at the plan view of all of units, and I think this is Sheet 10 or 21, if you look at that eight-unit building, it has a clear change in the setbacks from the four middle units to the four outside units. But if you look at the rendering, it's not apparent that that setback actually has been achieved. So I would caution you not to look at the rendering and say, that's really what's on the ground. It's not going to look like that. That looks like the roof line is all one straight line, but in fact, it can't be when you look at the plan that's on Sheet 10. So I think there ought to be an adjustment in those renderings so you can actually see those setbacks because the middle two units are going to project out closer to the street than the end ones will.
There are subtle changes in the roof line.
There are, but when you look at the rendering itself, it's almost a straight line. It almost looks like it's a straight line and it's not the case.
So.
Your rendering shows it almost steps.
Yeah, so the rendering probably, as we develop it further, probably the rendering is actually more up to date than the original site plan. What we've done was developed the eightplex as we've went along and kind of created the rendering, keeping it more uniform, but stepping the building. You can kind of see in the rendering. We've also, if you look better at SD6, you can kind of see it a little bit better to what Charlie's kind of saying in terms of, you kind of got that indentation there, which I don't think you can see as well in a 2D rendering. But the architect, you know, try, this is the footprint that they went off of to actually do their rendering. But I think you can see it a little clearer in this size sheet.
I think just from a personal point of view, the more staggered it is, the better looking it's going to be because when you drive down the street, you're going to see basically one continuous roof line. There aren't many changes elevation-wise. If there are, they're, they're very minor. Whereas if you look at the visuals that you have of the existing structures for the duplexes, you've got substantial changes in roof lines. This is going to be one long, continuous building and I don't think it's going to look as good as if it would if it was exaggerated more like the plan view shows. It's just a personal observation.
And your proposed layout looks consistent with what we were trying to do with building spacing in the past, so the distance between structures and stuff like that. Looks to be consistent. A little monotonous maybe, but consistent.
Something's got to give a little bit as you lengthen, you know, decrease the roadway of trying to get that, that little Rubik's Cube to make it work.
You could move them back and forth.
You can, you can a little bit and that's kind of the, you can see it a little bit to lessen where you come out. That's the idea, creating the awnings, that's creating the peaks of the roof in the middles versus some of the breaks in the roof line. It's not just one. I mean, it's so much easier.
I was more talking about the single and duplex models. They're all, I realize the closer to the fairway, the higher their homeowner's insurance.
So and as, as golf is more popular after the pandemic, it's been great for the golf course, but it also has brought on a lot of bad golfers as well. So you have a lot more people golfing, but you don't have a lot more good people golfing.
I didn't think anybody.
A lot more stray balls. So, you know, places that balls shouldn't be hit, so, you know, so.
Rich, he's talking about you. Anybody was watching?
Chairman Barrett, can you refresh me on the major modification approval process? I'm not up to speed.
It's almost the same process with, like Charlie said, we have to take care to do away with the underlying.
Continue the other one. Do a, do a full engineering review, right? And then bring and share our concerns, if any, with you and give you an opportunity to come back and then look at your report and make a decision.
I'll be doing one report, but it'll cover two different things. One is the fact that the site plan review is under your special permit. The details of that and the road construction come under your subdivision. So I'll be looking at that from drainage, utility location, and site drainage, that type of thing. So you're looking at two things. You're looking at a modification, number two, of the special permit, which was initially granted. When it was granted, Phases Two and Three were done conceptually while giving full detailed approval for Phase One. Then they came back with the subdivision plan for Phase Two, which made Phase Two now detailed like Phase One. But now with these changes, you're going back and making a modification of the special permit to eliminate that little finger of a dogleg they had, the relocation of this, the addition of an eightplex, and done into the subdivision, the relocation of the streets. So that's, that's what you're doing consecutively. Two different hearings at the same time.
And plus, you want to make sure you don't lose anything, any conditions or from the first approval.
So it would behoove the board, for those of you that didn't sit on those, to take a look at those because there were some specifics in there that you'll want to carry over.
And there is, this is a public hearing tonight, so if anybody would like to address the board on this project? Sure. Could you come forward and identify yourself?
Hi, can you hear me?
Pull it, pull it a little closer.
My name is Audrey Sarekia.
Is the light on on the?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
My name is Audrey Sarekia. I live in Onset. I have bought the golf course and the Cranberry Bog. I was just wondering how far out this whole development, how far out it's going to be into the golf, you know, how long it's going to be? Like, is it going to go all the way down towards the Cranberry Bog's maybe, down in that area? Or is it just going to stay up by the street on Onset Ave?
Starboard Drive.
So are you, the Cranberry Bog's, like the water towers here?
Yeah, the water, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's the water tower on the Cranberry Bog right here. This is the existing villages, so kind of behind the, it's cut off of this map, but this is the edge of the Cranberry Bog here, as well as here. So if you kind of picture it, the Cranberry Bog would be right here. So as you drive on Onset Ave, you can see where the construction's going on right now.
Right, right.
That's where it is.
That's where it's going to kind of stay.
Yeah, so you see the, the golf course buffers all around before you get to the Cranberry Bog.
All right, okay. All right. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Deb McGonell, I live at Bay Point Village. And my question, the eightplex is going to be down toward?
You need to get closer to the mic, ma'am, I'm sorry.
The eightplex is, that you're currently proposing as part of Phase Three or Phase Two is going to be down by La Casa's garage?
Correct.
And you're planning similar eightplex buildings for the parking lot that was the Cedar property?
That will be what we're coming in the future.
And how many eightplexes are you planning to put there?
Right now, we conceptually have 52, 52 units altogether. A mixture of six and eight.
Okay, 52 additional units. And, but you've only gotten approval for 84 currently.
We're not coming, this is not about the Cedar Apostle tonight.
Okay, so that's going to be a completely separate project?
Yeah. The only reason I bring it up is because that eightplex, try to tie the whole project together. So that eightplex, even though it's down by La Casa's garage, will kind of then, is our overall master plan, is to do that same type of structure on the Cedar Apostle. Originally, we conceptually had a Cedar Apostle approval of a three-story, four-story, 52-unit building. Where now, as we continue on, we feel that more of an eightplex broken up, a little more of the village kind of feel, right, the villages, right? And to there, makes more sense in that location as an overall development.
Okay. Initially, Tim Fay, when he was proposing this whole project, talked about redoing, once he acquired the Cedar property, he talked about redoing the entrance and making a grand entrance. Is that still in the, is that grand entrance still in the works?
Nothing more he would like to do is that grand entrance. I've heard about it many times. So what, so you can kind of see it even a little bit in the rendering here, but yes, that, obviously that would be, that's the gateway to the whole project and to the golf course and to everything, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
My name is Joe Back. I live in Onset Village. I just have a question. Is the top one the final or is the bottom with the finger the final?
The finger is currently approved and I'm trying to get rid of the finger.
Okay, so that's where you're going to put the eight-unit building down there and get rid of that finger?
Yeah. Okay. Getting rid of this finger here and I'm going to put an eightplex right here. So you're exactly right. So get rid of this, soften this a little bit. When I say soften, kind of push it a little bit away from the golf course, but this roadway is almost exactly the same. Eightplex here instead of a couple of singles here because I get rid of this finger, so then I put the eightplex there.
I have just one other question. I mean, originally when they proposed all this, of course, just one lady just talked about the grand entrance to it. Now, the parking lot that's next across the way, that's going to be Phase Four?
That when you enter to the right-hand side where the current parking lot is?
Yeah.
Would be Phase Four.
And what are you putting in Phase Four?
Fifty-two units.
Fifty-two units. Good, thank you.
Charlie, thank you very much.
It's the parking lot down to the clubhouse, right? That's the old clubhouse?
Yes.
The one on the right-hand side?
So when you drive in, so, kind of, no.
It's not, it's not connected.
Pavilion to the left, the wedding where we have the weddings, that's the parking lot to the right. Then as you keep going down, you go to dirt parking lot, which is for the clubhouse. So the dirt parking lot will become a paved parking lot with landscaping and lights.
I thought the paved parking lot on the right was part of the Cedar property.
It is.
That's what I was getting.
Both are, that's the only reason.
The Cedar went down there, down to the dirt parking lot.
So the dirt parking lot, yeah. So we're going to do both, but as you can see, the phasing was a very good question. Yes, it is. It is a lot going on here.
I don't see anybody online unless they want to identify themselves as wanting to speak.
Ms. Wertz has a question.
It's probably mundane, just learning about what's going down on in Onset, but can you tell me, basically, when you're all complete, how many individual living units? tell me, basically, when you're all complete, how many individual living units are there going to be?
Right now, we have approval for 84 units in phase one, two, and three, so right now, we have 84 approved.
Okay, and you're going for...
In the future, it'll be coming back to 52 units.
So you're at 140 units, something like that? 84, 54, something like 140 units? And does all this traffic, because I'm assuming there's at least one car in each thing, and probably two golf carts and probably an extra car, this all empties out until Onset Ave? Is that correct?
Yes.
Just how does the street handle all that extra?
Handle it just fine.
Just curious.
Nancy McHale, I've got my Wareham Land Trust hat on now. The land trust owns property that abuts the golf course. So my question is, is there any, going to be any change to the buffers for the neighborhood, or will those buffers stay in place?
Where's your property at?
It's map two, lot 1005.
Oh, there.
Yeah. So it's that lot right there.
So, no.
So no, okay. So that's good news from the conservation point, and will there be any difference to the drainage for, because there's quite the drop-off at Hill there? So we just need to make sure that there's no additional runoff coming down any of that route.
That's one of the things we need to find out, and we're asking about.
Terrific. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that, again, that's conservation land back in there. Thank you so much.
So that low point that you kind of speak of is right kind of in this line over here. It goes up higher at La Casa's, then kind of goes down in the slope, kind of at the beginning of the fairway over here. It just peaks a little bit as you go around the corner, as you walk the dirt road currently, a little bit, and then goes down in elevation to right about here is the low point. That's why the sewer pump station is located right here, because that is the low point. Everything will drain by gravity to this lower point. And then the drainage basin is in, again, for gravity, will be at that low point there, similar to what we did on the current fifth hole on the golf course now, as you drive by the clubhouse, same kind of idea.
Is that a new hand, Ken, or has that been up right along?
It's been up all the whole time.
All right, what's your pleasure, everyone? We've got drainage calcs to review, we've got conditions to compare. I think two weeks or longer. How much information have you given?
He's looked at this site 10, 15 times by now. He's got this one memorized.
Not quite.
Oh, I don't buy that.
I don't buy that either. He was quoting stuff to me. He's like, "I haven't looked at the flames, but did you do this and this and this?"
Just took a quick look, because when Chris mentioned that the land drops off from the La Casa gas station and down to the low point, there's a four-foot change in grade between the beginning of the eight-plex and the end of it. So it means that you're going to have to stagger those roof lines in order to go with the flow, so to speak.
So you can kind of see how it drops.
It doesn't drop much, so pay attention to that when you look at the actual plans.
And that's the idea of that, that's...
That's what we depend on you for.
And that's the idea of that eight-plex being separate, and to be able to stagger that building to go with the grades, and you can kind of see their individual roof lines, but then can be staggered. So if you look, as you get closer, as you will, is over here, you've got a couple of steps, you get more steps in the middle, and then the building drops, so you get lesser steps. So as you start to analyze this, you can kind of see that drop-off by how many steps are at the front door, to kind of, again, it is a challenging area, because it crests right there. So I'm at a crest, put an eight-plex, and have that challenge to deal with.
So is the 12th a reasonable expectation, or is more time to the next hearing?
I can be prepared, but I don't imagine that Principi will be prepared.
The who?
The engineer. And we've got, you've got a holiday coming up, the first of next week. I'll get on this and get the information back to the board, and I'll send a copy to them, but I can't speak for them as to whether or not they'll be ready on the 12th.
So we'll come back, and if we can address the comments in time.
Move it out a month?
Hold for the 26th.
I'd like to try for the next meeting. I don't think, I hope there won't be that many comments.
So would you like to make a motion to continue to the 12th?
I'll make the motion that we continue the modification to the special use permit 23-21. Site plan approval and definitive subdivision plan for Baypoint Country Club maps 28910 on lots 104A to our next meeting, which is...
12?
The 12th of July.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. Is there anything further? Give me none, all in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris. Thanks for this stuff, it's helpful.
What's that?
Yeah. The public comment on master plan, is that your proposed time slot?
I hear none and see none.
Staff report?
I hear there may be a change in the membership of the board.
I was getting to that.
George, before we get to that, can I just take a two-minute break?
Sure.
On the master plan, one of the things I think we should consider is privatization of some functions. It was brought out by Guy Campina in the news article regarding the sewer commission's concern about staffing at the wastewater treatment plant.
Concern about staffing?
Staffing, yes. And one way to deal with that is to have contract services that would cover a number of towns available, so be efficient in the private use of services for the unnecessary actions to maintain town.
So privatize the sewer treatment plant? Is that what you're saying? Short version?
Yeah, it could be. It's been done down in Georgia quite a bit, around the Vintland area.
I'm sorry.
It was big in New England, I think, a few years back. I don't know how it worked out.
It was hit and miss. There were a bunch of towns that did some privatization. There were a lot out in the western part of the state that did.
What does this have to do with master plan?
This is part of the infrastructure section of the master plan.
Say that again.
This is part of the infrastructure section element of the master plan.
How we provide services, either through a public employee or a private employee, affects the infrastructure section of the master plan?
Yeah, it does, because the infrastructure is what we're talking about maintaining.
I don't see how, I'm not arguing, I'm just confused, and I'm looking to you for guidance. The implementation techniques that we use, I wouldn't consider to be part of any master plan. The goals that we want to achieve in providing good quality services would definitely be in the master plan. How we go about doing that would be at a layer down, in my opinion.
It could be. It is done in master plans, though the government services are included in how they're actually provided to the community.
Would you, are you suggesting that this board take on an action or an investigation into how we might possibly want to use private industries to provide local government services?
I think that's a reasonable study to take place, and the planning board will be the agency for doing that.
You got any state grants to hire any consultants for us?
We'll look and see.
The, again, the devil's in the details on something like that. You still need a lot of, say, supervision to make sure you protect your infrastructure when you get into a situation like that. I know, I see what you're saying about cost reduction and maybe more stable staffing, but the, a lot of the, a lot of the expensive oversight stays in place.
Right, that's part of the issue, how it actually is done, if it actually becomes more efficient in the delivery of services. And it doesn't always make a lot of sense.
I mean, a lot of what went wrong with the plant in the past was due to neglect and money not always going to the right places, but that's another story. Anyway, as I started to say, some of you probably already know it, but I had elected not to seek reappointment to the planning board, so I think we've got a good group here, you ought to be able to keep things rolling right along.
You think? Come on, you've done a very good job of driving.
For a lot of years.
Hey, your meetings will be shorter without me here, look at that one. Yeah, sure, help yourself.
How many years, George?
I was trying to figure that out. I think the first big project I had was Home Depot. So how long ago was that? Mike's got me beat, though.
I know.
15. Home Depot.
Home Depot, wow.
Well, on behalf of the town...
I think Mike was here when they set the stone.
He was here when they created dirt, come on.
On behalf of the town, George, we owe you a big, big, big thank you, so consider it.
Well, thank you, too. It's been a great experience, and who knows, I may be back.
You'll be bored. Either that or we'll make decisions that'll make you nuts.
Either that or you'll make me...
You re-upped, right?
I did.
Kyle has offered to step into the full position. If that's agreeable to the board, I'll pass that on to the appointing authority.
I would move that we request Carl Schultz to be transitioned from associate to full member.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Speak now, forever, hold your peace.
That means we go, so I certainly am not going to bring all urgency.
Run, Kyle, run while you get the chance.
Well, one of the citizens proposed that we should all get fired or not...
Microphone.
I'm fine. I'm looking forward to it.
Thanks, I appreciate you stepping up. Motion was made and seconded?
On behalf of the citizens, one of which I have been for years, thank you very much, because I know I have been a thorn in your side. You have taken it with good humor, and that has been very much appreciated.
Only trouble in the Zoom meeting, I couldn't tell who was talking most of the time. You put both names up there, and I go, wait a minute, who's that?
Well, because both of us were there, and we're sorry about that, and we didn't mean to confuse you, but frequently, we do talk pretty much with the same voice. But thank you very much, George. Your service has been invaluable to the town and to the citizens, and everybody knows your heart's in the right place.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well said. Well said, Nancy.
Sorry for the short notice, but there's kind of a lot going on. Did we vote on that? All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Does he get to vote on his own?
Sure, aye.
And aye for the chair.
So Mr. Buckland, can I request new subject? Can I make sure we get a Clemmie update on our next meeting?
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Just on that note, I did speak with him, oh, three weeks ago, I think, maybe, two weeks ago, and he had agreed to do the work. There's been a couple loads of loam delivered down there, and there are wildflowers growing down there, but there are bare spots where the organic matter's been stripped, and nothing's going to grow there.
There's no way that loam is going to cover all the bare spots that he has had delivered, and there's been...
When I went by, there was one pile.
I think there's three.
Oh, three?
Three, I think.
So it looks like the intention is there, and I would say that previous attempts were made because there were wildflowers growing, but...
Yeah, but if you don't stabilize that loam, it's all going to blow all over the place.
Maybe that's why he dropped it off.
Do you have any other business, George?
I do not.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Sam. All in favor? Mike King?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair. Good night.
Thank you, gentlemen.